Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. We will start our meeting, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, thanks for joining us, everybody here in the council chambers and everybody online. Thank you very much for finding us. This is our first 6:30 start time, and so I'm glad everybody was able to make sure that we got here at the right time. And you weren't waiting here until six. Nobody was waiting here since six, were they? Good. Okay, that's good. 6:30 start time, which is our regular start time now. We actually had our first successful council listening sessions earlier this evening, and so we'll be reporting out on that as we get to the little later in our agenda. Let the record show, all seven members of the Bloomington City Council are present. And next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Council, I do have one change I would like to propose. We have a proclamation for the Minnesota Daughters of the American Revolution Day that didn't make it into the packet. I would like to add that as Agenda Item 2.3. It's a resolution that I will read, and then that would move the presentation, or the introduction of new employees to 2.4, and then the presentation of the Bloomington Tomorrow Together Strategic Plan to 2.5. And beyond that, we have four public hearings this evening. A hearing on our public, excuse me, our food truck ordinance, a public hearing on our residential livability ordinance, our rental housing code amendments, and a public hearing amending Chapters 10, 14, and 15, and Appendix A of the city code. We then will have a discussion in our, under our organizational business, talking about hotel and office conversion, and then a discussion that I think we've intimated to a couple of times about charitable gambling, an overview on our charitable gambling. So with that, Council, is there anything else? Any other changes or additions to the, to the agenda? With that, I would like to move the agenda as amended to add the additional proclamation, the Minnesota Daughters of the American Revolution Day as Agenda Item 2.3, and with everything else then shifted down accordingly.
Second.
Motion and a second to adopt the approval, or adopt the agenda as amended. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. We have an agenda. Next up on our agenda is Item 2, our introductory items. And as I just mentioned, we have three proclamations, so I'm going to head down, making sure I have everything here. I'm going to head down to... We have three different proclamations this evening, and the first one is Item 2.1, which is a proclamation for Arbor Day. And traditionally, Minnesota celebrates Arbor Day in April. I wish it would feel like April. It is not. It feels more like Arbor Day in February right now. This is the 34th year of the city of Bloomington achieving Tree City USA designation. So it's been something that has been a focus of the city of Bloomington. Our urban forest is something that's been important, and we've concentrated on it. And to celebrate all of these anniversaries, both Arbor Day and the Tree City USA designation, the city once again hosted a tree sale for residents. And I believe the sale, I think deliveries are taking place this week. I'm sure somebody will fill me in on that.
Dave Hanson is here.
Oh, Dave is here. Dave, I didn't see you back there.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Deliveries will take place next Thursday and Friday.
Deliveries of our trees, the new trees will take place next Thursday and Friday. So if you've ordered one, be on the lookout for that then. So our proclamation, for the city of Bloomington, proclamation for Arbor Day, April 29, 2022. Whereas Arbor Day provides people in Minnesota the opportunity to celebrate the importance of trees and forests to our economy, culture, history, and future of the state; and whereas trees are of great value, as they provide clean air and water, shade and energy savings, wildlife habitat, recreational opportunities, wood products, and jobs, while capturing and storing carbon from the atmosphere, thereby offsetting greenhouse gas emissions; and whereas properly planting and caring for a diverse mix of trees makes community forests more resilient by minimizing the impacts of diseases, insects, and other stressors, such as climate change, and providing long-term community and environmental benefits; and whereas thoughtfully choosing, planting, and caring for a diverse mix of trees now supports resilient communities well into the future. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim April 29, 2022, as Arbor Day in the city of Bloomington, dated and signed this day, the 25th of April, 2022. As I said, Dave, why don't you come on up here, please, if you could? Dave Hanson is our Assistant Maintenance Superintendent and our City Forester, and has been doing this a long time, and appreciate all the work that you folks do in terms of making our city forests what they are. And I know it's especially challenging these days with the Emerald Ash Borer and all the impacts that we have. And so just to see that diversity in the, in the forest and the diversity of the trees and, and this wonderful program that's been going on for how long now? How long is this tree sale?
Sale?
Yes.
This is our 15th year of the tree sale.
15th year, wonderful.
We put thousands of trees out there in people's yards to do this.
Very good. Very good. Anything you'd like to add here?
No, just...
No, okay.
Actually, thank you to any entire city council for all the support that you've given us in this initiative over the years.
Absolutely. I'm going to officially hand you the proclamation, shake your hand, and say thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Our second proclamation is for National Drinking Water Week. And actually, this was one of the first proclamations, this was one of the first big things that I remember when I started on the council. I started in mid-April 10 years ago on the council, and I remember thinking, National Drinking Water Week, they really do have a week for just about everything in the world now, don't they? And we do have National Drinking Water Week. And it's, it's actually been celebrated for more than 40 years by the American Waterworks Association. And May 1 through the 7th marks our National Drinking Water Week this, we, this year in 2022. We had two senior operators that were going to be here with us tonight, but right now they're chasing down a leak or a pipe break somewhere. So we have, we have Scott Anderson, our Utility Superintendent, here with us tonight. I'm going to read the proclamation, then turn the mic over to you, and off we go. This is for Drinking Water Week, May 1 through the 7th, 2022. Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource; and whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy and the quality of life we enjoy; and whereas any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth and diversity, productivity and public safety, all are in some way related to access to safe water; and whereas we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which future generations depend; and whereas each citizen of our community is called upon to help protect our source waters from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues by getting to know their water. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim, May 1 through the 7th of 2022, as Drinking Water Week in the city of Bloomington, and I urge all citizens to continue their efforts to protect our most valuable natural resource. So you folks do incredible work. We have the best tasting water anywhere. Ask anybody, and they will tell you that. And also, from a conservation standpoint, I know that you do such important work making sure that water is available in so many different ways, and we appreciate the work that you do. Anything you'd like to add to, to all we've said here?
Thank you, Mayor.
Come on around.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, for all the support continually with our programs and things we, things that we do. I wish Ben, Senior Operators Ben Whitcomb and Lance Kowski were scheduled to be here tonight. They're, they're a couple of the people that do, you know, the work every day, and they're not here because they're doing that work right now. So without them, you know, it'd be pretty tough to do, but they, they do a great job, and we enjoy it and look forward to doing it every day.
Good. Well, thank you very much for the work that you do.
Thank you.
Hand you that. Thanks much.
Thank you.
Thanks. And finally, today, we are declaring April 30 of this year as the Minnesota Daughters of the American Revolution Day here in Bloomington. And Francis Stock, you're here, there you are. Come on up. I'm going to read the proclamation and then turn the microphone over to you. Come right over here. How about that? And I appreciate your being here, and I know it's been a journey trying to get your, your convention here in Bloomington off the ground. So I appreciate the effort. So I will read the proclamation. Minnesota Daughters of the American Revolution Day, April 25, 2022. Whereas the National Society Daughters of the American Revolution, NSDar, was founded in 1890 to preserve the memory and spirit of those who contributed to securing American independence; and whereas NSDar is a nonprofit, nonpolitical women's service organization with more than 185,000 members in approximately 3,000 chapters worldwide in which any woman 18 years and older, regardless of race, religion, or ethnic background, who can prove lineal descent from a patriot of the American Revolution is eligible for membership; and whereas NSDar has a long history of promoting historic preservation, education, and patriotism; and whereas the study of American history is important to a citizen's understanding of current events in the United States and around the world; and whereas the Minnesota State Society Daughters of the American Revolution promotes the study of American history among our young people, and will recognize outstanding essays written by students on topics of historical importance at their virtual state conference held on April 30, 2022, at which members from 22 DAR chapters from across Minnesota will attend. Now therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim Saturday, April 30, 2022, as Minnesota Daughters of the American Revolution Day in Bloomington, Minnesota, dated this 25th day of April, 2022. And as I said, Francis is here with us this evening. So who are you a descendant of? I mean, is it, would it be a name any of us would recognize? Would we know?
My first patriot was Captain Johnny Scott from Orange County, Virginia. I have since proven 16 additional patriots.
Wow.
From Virginia, Maryland, and Pennsylvania.
Really?
Including some Quakers. And I'm very happy to be a part of this organization that honors our patriots that founded our great country.
And must be very proud with that type of lineage. That's, that's very impressive.
It is. I'm not, I don't have the, the most. There are some people who have 60 or more.
Wow, wow. I mentioned the long road. You were going to have the convention, I think it was two years ago. I think we first traded emails about this, and then, of course, COVID shut everything down, and now that we had another possibility, and unfortunately, a scheduling glitch, is that what it was?
We were told that the hotel that was going to host us was sold and is becoming apartments or offices or something, and so it wasn't feasible to get a new venue in the short amount of time we were given.
I understand. Well, I have a very good and successful virtual conference. Thank you very much for the work that you do here in Bloomington and across the state of Minnesota and across the country and across the world, and thank you for your continued commitment to this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We, on behalf of State Region Kathy Houston and the 1,253 members, we appreciate what Bloomington does when we are able to have our conventions here.
Very good. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming this evening. Item 2.4 on our agenda now is the introduction of new employees. Mr. Carl Keel, our Public Works Director, is going to introduce three of his new employees to us this evening. Good evening, Carl. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. As the mayor noted, have three employees with us this evening that we'd like to introduce, two in our engineering division and two in, or in one in our maintenance division. And maybe I'll start out with Byron. Byron, if you don't mind coming up. Byron Tice, he's a new civil engineering technician with the city. He's grew up in the Carver area, so in the metro area, and received his Bachelor of Engineering degree from Michigan Tech up in the upstate Michigan. He has worked previously with the city of Stillwater, has kind of a wide range of hobbies, from Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu and to home brewing, and probably a quieter pastime of gardening this year is kind of new. So with that, I'd like to welcome Byron.
Hi, thank you.
Good evening. Welcome.
Byron, if you say anything.
Hi, thank you. Happy to be here.
We're very happy to have you. I, I think I played baseball against a lot of Tices from the Carver and Chaska area in my day.
Yeah, there are a lot of them.
Yes, there are. Well, thanks for being here this evening.
And Derek, if you could come up. Second, Derek is also a new civil engineering technician with us. Derek started his career as a tool and die maker, but then went back to school at the University of Minnesota at Mankato to receive a civil engineering degree. He's kind of worked in the concrete industry and the concrete admixture industry, kind of the chemicals around concrete, prior to joining us, but we're extremely happy to have him. So Derek?
Good evening. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you for the opportunity.
Absolutely. And enjoying the first, how long have you been on board? I don't know if Carl said. Have you been on board long or?
March 21st.
March, oh, so you're relatively new. Very good. Well, welcome aboard, and very glad to, to meet you in person. We've been doing these virtually for too long, so it's nice to have people, our new employees back in, in the chambers and be able to say hello to them in person. So welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So and our third new employee is with us virtually this evening. And I think, well, he's here. So Jacob Kopandreier. Jacob is pursued a degree up at William Tech in the area of Wilderness and Park Management. When he's not here at work, he spends his time on, on their organic farm in Princeton and makes a wide variety of fruits and vegetables. Jacob's not really new to us. He actually worked as a seasonal employee in our Parks Division for four years, so we know him quite well. Very excited that we had an opening and we were able to hire him as a parkkeeper. And so, welcome back, Jacob, to, to Bloomington.
Yeah, thank you for having me. I'm so excited to get on with the city of Bloomington full-time. It's going to be a great experience.
Well, good. It's interesting, the progression from being a seasonal kind of employee now to a full-time employee. What are, what are your thoughts on that? I mean, is that a little different kind of thing?
Yeah, it's a little different. There's a lot more responsibilities, but I think I'm ready for it. Yeah, it, it's going to be good.
Good, good, good. And now, and now you know those, those seasonal employees that come on this summer, you'll, you've got something in common with them. You'll be able to mentor them along, I'm sure.
Absolutely, I do, yeah.
Good. Well, welcome aboard, Jacob. I hope to meet you in person very soon.
Thank you for having me.
Absolutely. Jacob, Derek, Byron, welcome. Glad to have you here on the city of Bloomington. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carl. Item 2.5 on our agenda is a presentation of our Bloomington Tomorrow Together Strategic Plan. You've heard me talking quite a bit about our strategic plan and the work that has gone into this since, for a long while now. I don't even know when we started all this, because the time has kind of melded together through the pandemic and so on, but it's, it's the result of our five-year plan, our one Bloomington plan that we had put together five years ago, five or six years ago now, coming to the end of its, of its time. We looked at this as an opportunity to update our strategic plan, but to do it with a more community-focused, community-based kind of feel to it. And as I look out here and see so many members of our community who took part in our core planning team, on our different teams that we had put together to make this a reality, first of all, it's good to see you all again. Thank you for being here this evening. And it just makes it, it really is a different feel to a strategic plan than I felt in the past. So Mr. Verbrugge, if you could take us through this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Good evening. We're going to start tonight with a video that our communications team put together, and I'm going to make my way down to the podium while the video plays, and then we'll continue the presentation from down there. So Grant, if you want to queue up the present, or the video, that'd be great.
Every step of this process, we've involved the community in the process.
And I really think they went above and beyond trying to like make opportunities for people to get engaged and be engaged and create access points.
We believe defining the future and intended future for the city of Bloomington is best done when we do it in partnership with the community.
We are the people that make up our community. You know, we are the ones who are living here, working here, raising our families here. We should have a say in the direction going forward of our city.
This was a super diverse group in every which way, like gender, age, racial diversity, geographic diversity across Bloomington.
You get the best response when you have the community represented in a meeting like this, so it's great. You know, there's different beliefs, different nationalities, they come from different places, different stories, but we all call Bloomington home. And so it's great to have so many different perspectives when it comes to talking about the city that we all live in.
Our mission is to cultivate an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. That was the mission statement that came out of our core planning team process back in December, and since then, we've been working to flesh out what that means and how we're going to achieve it. So we started this process last fall by including a lot of community members who wanted to have a voice, to get their input, to find out what they thought about the community. And we use that information during our core planning team to create that mission statement, to set some core values for our community, and to identify strategies for how we move into the future.
We were able to use a consensus process to come together, talk about our shared values and the things that we all wanted for the city we want to live in. That was a really exciting part of the process. We really just tried to have open, honest conversations, and there was like, there were some really challenging conversations that we had as a group. We came out with this plan that we're all pretty excited about together.
Since then, we've had action teams that have met around those strategic objectives, and we've had a measurement team that has put together the ways that we are going to monitor and track progress to achieving this mission. They have had their input into the mission, that what's important, how we're going to achieve it. They've done the research, and they've made the recommendations. And all of that has come back to me, so that when I present it to the city council, it will reflect the will of the people, because we've had hundreds of residents involved in this process. Most recently, the core planning team came back together in March. They reviewed the input from the action teams and the measurement team, and they signed off on the draft plan, which is what will be presented to city council.
Everybody's pretty careful about like what the government invests in, and this is, you know, our money as a taxpaying citizen. So we really were, tried to be careful about like what, what are we putting into place? Is this realistic, and is this something that's worthy of the investment of time and resources?
After asking the city council to adopt this plan, we will be working with the city council to finalize that five-year work plan, and then we will have regular reporting to the community about the work that we're doing, how we're measuring it, and how we know we are achieving success.
This is the work of your neighbors, this is the work of your city government, and in addition to this, I think there's additional commission spots that are opening up, and this is just one of the many ways to get involved with like crafting this future together for the city of Bloomington.
One of the best takeaways of this process is the realization of the abundance of commitment and passion in the community. Our residents have time and again demonstrated how much they care about Bloomington, and how firmly committed they are to a future where people can have that same experience in Bloomington. If people want to learn more about this, resources are available, especially on our website. We have a whole page that's dedicated to Bloomington Tomorrow Together. And there you'll be able to see the mission statement, you'll be able to see the core values, you'll be able to see the strategies, and as we progress, moving forward, you'll be able to see accomplishment being reported. So that information will be very transparent and very available for everybody who wants to see it.
I want to thank our communications team. As usual, they, they do exceptional work, and so having a nice summary of the process thus far is really helpful. I think that's a good tone setter for tonight. So Mayor and Council, what I'd like to accomplish this evening first is just to provide some background on how we got here today. And then for much of this presentation, turn it over to the folks who were so influential in crafting it. And then we'll talk a little bit about next steps, and then ultimately asking you to act on the city manager's recommendation to adopt the plan to start moving forward. Just as some background on the, on the planning process, strategic planning is not new to the city of Bloomington or the city council. We actually adopted a plan back in 2016 that we called the One Bloomington Plan. It initially had six, what we called pillars, strategic pillars, and we added a seventh along the way. We worked, I, I think, really well to advance those, those goals over the last six years. Initially, it was planned to be a five-year strategic plan, like 26, or yeah, 2016 through 2020. Because of COVID, it limited the ability for us to really have an involved community process. And that was important, because that second bullet there, when this was initially approved back in 2016, it was largely done as an exercise by the city council and the senior staff, right? And as I've said before, the city council and the senior staff know a lot about a lot of things, but it wasn't necessarily reflective of what the community needs or desires were. And there wasn't a lot of input into the process back then. And I would say that's not a criticism, it's an observation of where we were as a city based on the philosophy at the time. And the thing that has really evolved over the last few years is the city's commitment to community engagement. So when we started talking about this next strategic plan, we really wanted to make sure that we did have significant resident participation in that process. Council is familiar with the graph, the graphic that we have up here. This is the spectrum of engagement by the International Association of Public Participation. And at the beginning of this process, we asked, where do we want to be on that spectrum? And collaborate was the area where we said we wanted to be. In other words, we're going to have significant involvement in not just the inputs into it, but the actual crafting of the strategic plan. Ultimately, the final decision is always going to rest with the city council, and that's why tonight it's a city manager recommendation to you. But the, the process itself is what we would like to call co-creation of the strategic plan. So how did that play out? Well, we started back in October with community cafes in October and November, and we also had an effort to recruit people into this process for the various teams that were involved. The first of those is the core planning team. The core planning team was made up of equal parts residents and city representatives. So we had 15 residents, the superintendent of Bloomington Public Schools, three members of the city council, and 11 city staff. So we had 30 people on the core planning team, with residents being, you know, if you count the council members as residents, which I do, a strong majority of that group. We also had amongst the staff, a good number of the staff who were also residents of Bloomington. So those folks are doubly invested, not just in living here, but also in the work that they do on a daily basis. The core planning team met for about 33, 34 hours over the course of three days back in early December. It was a significant commitment of time and effort on their part. And then the work product that they produced was given to the action and measurement teams, who started to put some structure to the framework itself. And so the core planning team came up with core values, mission statement, strategic objectives, strategies, and the actions to go along with it that actually came out of the action team process. And we also have what we call delimeters, and we'll talk a little bit about that. And so I want to invite the members of the team to come up, because I think it's important that their voice is represented here, since they had a lot to do with the words that you're going to see here. So I think for each of them, if you want to introduce yourself before you walk through it, that would be great. JC, come on up.
Good evening. I'm JC St. Ange Holm, and I am a six-year resident of Bloomington. Our core values, we believe that the community thrives when its members share responsibility for its well-being. We believe that transformation will come through collective courage and the willingness to take risks. We believe that when diversity is embraced, the community is strengthened. We believe that when everyone, we believe that everyone benefits when there is equitable access to opportunity. And we believe that security, safety and security are critical components of a resilient and healthy community.
My name is Nurmut. I'm a Bloomington resident, and I would like to read the mission statement first. Our mission is to cultivate an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be. And also, I would like to read strategic objectives. By 2030, our community members will feel connected to their neighbors' well-being. By 2030, our community members will feel connected to their neighbors, welcomed and valued by the community as a whole. By 2030, the city of Bloomington will achieve significant improvement in the indices measuring the community's environmental and individual health. By 2030, the city of Bloomington will achieve significant improvement in indices measuring equitable economic growth.
Thanks, Mayor.
Hi, I'm John Anderson, and I'm really loud, sorry.
You must be a teacher.
I'm a lifelong Bloomington, I'll stand way back here. I'm a lifelong Bloomington resident, just progressively moved further east as we've gone on. I'm also an educator, I've been a member, employee of Bloomington Public Schools for the last 20 years, and I'm currently the activities director of Bloomington County High School. Our strategies: Building trusting relationships that acknowledge diversity so that we are able to embody our core values, live our mission, and achieve our strategic goals. We will do what is necessary so that all of the community can understand, support, and actively contribute to the achievement of the mission and the strategic objectives. And we will identify and align efforts across organizations in the community to leverage, develop, and maximize assets to achieve mutually beneficial outcomes.
Hi, my name is Priscilla Roberts, and I am a resident here in Bloomington. And I'm going to read strategy one, build trusting relationships. The city has an internal culture that is consistent with core values. The city uses a model to support neighborhood, identity, placemaking, connection, history, and culture. The city uses a comprehensive plan for addressing issues of safety and security. The city has regulations that have been revised to increase flexibility and support for community, gathering places, including small businesses, community organizations, and city spaces. The city employs staff that are skilled, empowered, and expected to build and maintain authentic relationships with community members. The city acknowledges and addresses issues of injustice for historically marginalized communities in Bloomington. The city expanded its creative placemaking program across Bloomington. And the city has a model for a centralized gathering space that is welcoming, unique, dynamic, and celebrates Bloomington's diversity.
Thank you, Priscilla.
Hello, my name is Brendan Klein, and I'm a resident of Bloomington. I'll be reading for strategy two. The city will have a network of diverse and trusted community partners that have been established to share relevant information. We have identified what is missing in our approaches of communicating with our community. Barriers to participation are identified and removed. The community has a better understanding of how the strategic objectives will affect them and why they should care. Community members are increasingly motivated to actively contribute, and community members increasingly take advantage of opportunities to actively contribute.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, my name is Nancy Brewster, and I am an outreach and engagement coordinator here with the city of Bloomington. And I will be reading strategy number three. We have established and piloted a community asset mapping model for cataloging key services, benefits, and resources to identify strengths and gaps relating to Bloomington's strategic objectives. We have established partnerships with organizations to connect residents and businesses with relevant resources. And the community asset map is used by the public and partners to access and align resources.
I'm Dana Chow, and I'm a city employee and a Bloomington resident. In addition to everything that we are going to do, we also establish some delimiters of what we're not going to do. We are not going to add any programs, project, policy, or service that is not consistent with our core values and aligned to our mission. We also are not going to allow past practices to interfere with the consideration of new ideas.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate that. One of the things that is really important for this plan is to know that we are going to monitor it. And so measurement is really important. We have a couple of statements about measurement. Our measurement team is going to be co-chaired by Mike Sable, our assistant city manager, and Sarah Merriman, who is actually a member of our core planning team, but also has a strong interest in this area as well. So Mike is going to talk a little bit about the measurement.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, Mike Sable, assistant city manager, City of Bloomington. The measurement team was made up of 19 individuals, 14 residents and five staff. And what the, the measurements really tried to do, and I can talk about sort of the end results, is that we will develop a measurement system and report out by the end of '22. But we also have a community-involved process for measuring the strategic plan. And what we had talked about in terms of the measurements was really trying to identify how we can align with the strategies and create some, and I'll use some terminology that will become very familiar for you over the next five years, but really focused on four domains. And they are connected, welcomed, and valued, is the first domain. The second one is around environmental health, which is a very common theme for this council and this community. The third component is individual health. And then the fourth one is equitable economic growth. And one of the things, so we tried to focus on those sort of four key bucket areas. And then what we identified underneath all of those were 14 different dimensions that we could measure. And being a good data nerd that I am, there are 43 facets that are behind that. So think about domains, dimensions, and facets. And that really gives the staff a kind of a framework for actually identifying initiatives. And our measurement team really dove really deeply into these and actually tried to identify sources and uses so we could actually find out information ahead of time. And so I thought it would be helpful to kind of give an example of how it might look in a report and a dashboard to the community, which is, I will close with that. But under the framework of equitable economic growth, one of the dimensions that we use is around business growth. And one of the facets that we could have is new business starts. So we can measure new business starts as part of a business framework, as part of equitable economic growth. And the city staff can, and the community can also then pair its programs and resources like the Small Business Development Center that's coming there. And they, we can have a direct link between that action and that initiative to the strategic plan. And so what we really want to have is that kind of line of sight connection to the strategic plan, and also have a way to report it out to the community and to you and to the staff so that we're actually measuring and can show and tell our story. And so one of the initiatives that we are also bringing forward to you later this year, hopefully by October, but hopefully maybe a little sooner, is an actual community dashboard around our metrics, embedding the things that we already collect and showing them in a potentially new way, but also gathering this new information. And so for me, this is a really exciting opportunity to really link the work that we're doing to the community outcomes that everyone expects.
All right, one thing I want to share, council is aware of this, but for folks who are watching and, or maybe hearing this for the first time, one of the real powerful aspects of this process is that it's what we call a consensus-based decision model. And why that's powerful is that in the course of these teams working together, every person in the room had to give a thumbs up to every word that's on the page. So when I say that we worked for 33 or 34 hours over the course of three days in that initial core team meeting, it's because there was a lot of time that was spent dissecting every word on the page. And when we walked out of that room, everybody had to be in agreement that they were going to support that in word and indeed. And the reason that's important is that we have, we have a strategic plan, we have a document here, and a plan that I think has as much support as we could ever hope to imagine for something like this. And so I wanted to provide a couple of reflections on the process and what the plan means. So I've asked a couple of the core planning team members to share that. First up is Jamie Schumacher.
I'm not loud like John, I'm also short, so. So thank you. My name is Jamie Schumacher, my pronouns are she, her, hers. I live in Bloomington, I'm a transplant, and I'm raising my two kids here. I also have the pleasure of serving on the city of Bloomington's Creative Placemaking Commission. So Jamie asked me to talk about some of the reasons why I thought this plan was important to me. I thought of like 100, he said I have two minutes, so I had to narrow that down. So these are two things that sit out to me. And the first was that engagement aspect. So when we think about the neighborhood we want to cultivate, and for me especially as a parent, it's like, what is the environment I'm shaping for my kids? It's not just up to the city or the council, and it's not just like me shooting off an email to council when I disagree with something, which I've done. But it's about like me investing that time, and Jamie spoke to the amount of time we took. As a parent of two little kids, like that much time, that's a significant investment for me. So being able to contribute to the process and like donate my time and my skills in that way, and creating pathways for that. You talked about the thumbs up. I think as you read through this plan, you can see the city's fingerprint and residents' fingerprints all over this plan. So that, that engagement aspect and that really intentional process, that's something that's important to me, and that stands out to me. The second is that impact and the ability for this plan to have impact. I work with nonprofits, we have tons of plans that just sit on a shelf and do nothing. We were really, really focused about this process, and we asked ourselves, what are the barriers? Like, we're not just creating goals, but what are the barriers that are going to keep us from reaching those goals? And we were really specific about looking at what the city's infrastructure was, and those next steps we have in here address some of those things that will prevent us from achieving those goals. So the ability for this plan to have impact, I think, is really great. So those are the things that sit out to me. Really grateful that the city created a mechanism for people to get engaged in a variety of ways, and super excited that, you know, we have other commissions and ways that people can continue to be engaged in this process moving forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Next up is Amos Olivares.
Good evening, Council. My name is Amos J. Olivares, and I serve as community engagement and teaching pastor at a local Eastside Bloomington Church, Cedar Valley. And it's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. Thank you, Jamie, for the opportunity. They say that the best time to plant a tree is 20 years ago. The next best time is today. Well, 30 people worked very hard, and, and they all work or live in Bloomington, and they gave, they gave some time to plant trees for this community that we all love. And hopefully 20 years and maybe not even that long away, Bloomington will be better for it. You don't become remarkable on accident, you become remarkable on purpose. And the strategic plan to me puts the focus where it needs to be, and that is on the people. Bloomington is about the people. It's who we are, not what we have, that makes Bloomington a remarkable community where people want to be. And that's saying a lot, given that we have the largest mall in America. The process was a memorable experience. Jamie's leadership is first class. The team of 30 who worked so hard for something so much bigger than us, we are all now friends, and we quickly realize how different we all are. But that's what made this process so rewarding. As for the potential of Bloomington, Minnesota, we have an enormous opportunity right in front of us, an opportunity to lead, influence, and inspire. The greater Twin Cities area is in desperate need of rebuilding and transformation. We, the people, black, brown, white, and everyone in between, our businesses, our churches, our families, our kids, we have all endured a lot around here. The aftermath of well-known tragic events continues to keep us divided with an understandable distrust in authority and very real animosity. I'd argue that the eyes of our nation have been on us, and they are not looking up to us, no, they're looking down on us. So here's what we, the people of Bloomington, have to say to you. Keep watching, because the people of Bloomington, with God's help, accept the challenge to lead the way to a better place, a place we can all enjoy, raise our families and find rest. Our city, our schools, our law enforcement, our churches, we are all working hard to become a remarkable community where people want to live. Thank you.
Thanks, Amos. Little tip in the future, always have a pastor be part of your presentation.
Amen.
So let's talk about next steps. Council is aware of what the framework is, we've been sharing it with you since the core team produced it back in December. What we're asking tonight, my recommendation to the city council is that you adopt the framework as it's been presented. Next steps after that, city council will have a retreat here sometime in the next probably six weeks or so, to start developing preliminary work plans to take these action statements and the strategic objectives and start moving them forward, with the idea being that that work plan is going to be for about the first year, year and a half. After we get through that process with the city council, we'll have to evaluate the resources that are going to be needed to move the work forward. Now, this is one of the things I really want to focus on, because I think we heard a fair amount about this, people's concerns about this process was the amount of money it was going to cost to do this, right? And I would say that that is entirely at the discretion of the council to determine the appropriate pace or the appropriate priorities, and then to make sure that it's resourced based on those priorities. So one thing that I want to make sure people understand is that this is, this is not some sort of budget busting plan, that we're suddenly creating all of these new initiatives. And in fact, I would say that a lot of this is going to depend on resources within the community that are not monetary, that involve the commitment of time and effort by people who don't work for the city of Bloomington, because a lot of this is community-focused. So understanding exactly what the priorities are for the council within the plan itself, and then we'll match up the strategic plan to the funds available through the budgeting process. And then finally, going back to the measurement theme, we'll establish baseline measurements for where we're at today so that we can clearly articulate whether or not we are progressing over the next few years to start meeting the expectation that's contained within this plan. I do want to talk a little bit about the timeframe, because you'll recall the strategic objective said by 2030, which is eight years or more from here, versus the fact that we're suggesting this is a five-year strategic plan. The fact is that a community of 90,000 people is a big ship, right? You don't turn a big ship on a dime. There's, there's decades of history in this community. And if we say that we're not going to allow past practice to determine how we move forward, you know, there's potentially some things that have to change. Processes at the city, the way that we do things, how we include people, there's a whole litany of things that have to change. That doesn't happen overnight. And so we're setting, I think, a reasonable timeframe to say that here's our target for when we can really say that we've met this challenge. In the meantime, we're going to check back annually on the plan to see if we are progressing, primarily using the measurements as the, as the way of getting indications, but also doing an environmental scan, see if the things that we thought were important the year before or a couple of years before still continue to be priorities in the community or major concerns, or however you want to characterize them. And we will ask the folks who served on the core planning team if they are interested to come back on an annual basis and do that check-in. And it's not unusual in a process like this that some people will filter away, so we'll have a little bit of, you know, building up to do as new people come in and we, we exchange people in this process, but making sure that the folks who were integral in developing this are continuing to be evolved as we move forward. And so I would imagine that this wonderful group of people behind me, and some of whom that you have seen today, are going to be back here a year from now as we take our first look at where we're at, and then determine if there's any course correction that needs to happen. And then we will bring that back to the council and make recommendations at that time. So I am happy to stop there and answer any questions that the council may have, either about the process or the recommendations themselves. And certainly if, if you have questions for members of the core team, the presenters here, I, none of them are bashful, so I'm sure that they would be happy to step up and share their thoughts as well. Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge, and thanks for everybody who spoke up and who spoke this evening. And I will attest, none of them are bashful. And it's a, and that's why this was such a strong process. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess I just want to start by thank you, Jamie, for your leadership in this effort. And, you know, I think, of course, all of us on council were very, very supportive of this community-based strategic planning, but really your leadership and in the direction that you set for us is, was fantastic, and the result shows. And so just thank you again for your leadership and congratulations on the process and getting to this point. And I want to thank, of course, all of the residents who were engaged and involved in this effort. I served on one of the action teams, so I think we had three or four Saturdays together, and it was quite intense, and so definitely. And so definitely appreciate that time is our most precious resource, and the fact that you dedicated that much of your life to this effort, just really, really grateful, and it wouldn't be what it is without you, so thank you. So I do have a quick question. Some of the indicators and the metrics, I just noticed that, for example, I think under inclusivity in the education section, there weren't any indicators yet, and so am I correct that those are not completely finished yet? And I think Mr. Sable said through the end of the year, they would continue to be developed?
That's correct.
Okay. And if we have any ideas or feedback, would you take them?
We are absolutely open to your suggestions.
Okay, I will send my list then. No, I think that they're great, but I just had a couple that stuck out to me. So that was my only question, but again, just want to thank everybody that was involved, and city staff, of course, because that was above and beyond your typical work weekend. I know that's a lot, so thank you.
Appreciate that, Councilmember Carter, Mr. Mayor, and councilmembers. I didn't mention in the presentation, and I think that I should mention it, that the city council deserves a lot of recognition in this as well, for this reason. At the very start of this process, we asked the council to do something that is unusual for a city council, and that's to give up power and authority over the process. And I made sure that the core planning team understood that in the very first day, that in the very first morning that we met, that when the council says that we are going to invite the community into this process, and we are going to abide by this consensus-based process, that's a significant statement by the city council about how important engagement is to you. And so I appreciate the council's support for this, because I do know that it took us a while to get here, right? To try and understand how the process worked, we had the consultant in front of the council a couple of times talking about this. And so there was an element in the presentation about risk-taking, and I want to just point out that that was a place where the council took a risk, and I just want to make sure that you get recognized for that.
Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, again, want to sort of echo some of the comments, and thank you to the core planning team and everyone who participated in the process. Thank you to staff for moving this forward. One of the things that I have often discussed is a desire to see greater ownership from the community in the work that's done in this building in a variety of different ways. And I think this has been an incredible demonstration of that, and I'm really, I'm just really excited that not only that this took place, but that it has been such a valuable experience for the folks, and continues to be a valuable experience for the folks who are involved in this way. That, to me, is just, is really, really heartening. I think, especially over these last few years, as, you know, was mentioned, that we've all been so isolated and so separated in a lot of different ways, you know, physically and emotionally and mentally, and all of these different things that have happened, to come together and take ownership over our community is really, really remarkable. And I think, to me, one of the words that really stuck out, and I actually wrote it down, was this concept of responsibility. Not only, you know, we've heard a lot about responsibility over these last few years, personal responsibility, but we haven't heard as much about interpersonal responsibility, the responsibility we have to each other as members of a community. And I am just so, so pleased that so many folks came together to demonstrate that we have a responsibility to each other to do the work of our community. So thank you. I'm just so thrilled, so excited to see where this goes. Excuse me, thank you.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, I've mentioned this before, but when I first heard about this idea, the city manager knows I was a bit of a skeptic, because in previous years, we kind of get together in the conference room, all the data up on the walls, and take what we hear out of the doors and bang out a plan and get to work on it. But throughout this process, and just recently, I've heard from a lot of folks that look at social media, look at the national news, and they say, why on earth would anybody want to get involved in government right now? And why? Why subject yourself to that? Why jump in with both feet? And I think this is a tremendous example of when 30 people on a core planning team and hundreds of people beyond that raise their hand to say, I will, what can happen? And this process has really given me a lot of hope that not only local government can still work, but that the values of this country, as shown at the local level, can still really, really work. So anybody out there that's just tuning into this now and just kind of seeing this document and reading through it and going, yeah, that makes sense, I get it, really know that this is what happens when you have a bug in your ear, or you have something that you want to communicate, you want to see done, or you have a friend that does. This is what happens when you show up and get involved and talk to us, big things. So thank you for this process, and I'm real excited to vote yes on it.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Martin, councilmembers, I think it's a good point that you make about how many people were interested in this process. I neglected to mention it. We had over 150 people who applied to be part of the teams, over 100 that actually sat for interviews. We had about three dozen city staff that broke up into teams to interview all those people, and then we came together and, to talk about a challenge, is trying to get 36 people to agree on 30 people, or 15 people, actually. But it really was a tremendous expression of interest from the community that we had that many people step forward that said, I want to be part of this. And even if they didn't end up on a core planning team or participating in one of the other teams, we're really, really grateful that they were willing to step forward.
Councilmembers, anything else? Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor. Certainly a remarkable process, and I think Councilmember Martin, you know, shared my skepticism when the process started. Certainly a group of excellent folks that we were partnered with. I think the manager and executive team did an awesome job of pulling together a very diverse group of people to help meet the challenges of the city kind of going forward. There was something in your presentation, though, that I wanted to just kind of slip in there. I know we all want this to be successful, and so I think part of it is not just celebrating it, but also being very sober as we move forward with our, you know, our city's future, you know, those trees. You know, if you plan in the wrong spot, you could have problems. And so you talked about, you know, steering a large ship, you know, and, you know, I can think of some of the examples of where, you know, we've tried to make changes, you know, the DMV, the community center, the energy kind of process. As my microphone shuts off.
I promise you, that's not anything.
Well, you know, it's probably my wife, you know, you need to be more brief. But, you know, we'll look at those particular plans where we've had a little bit of problems. Some I supported, others I didn't. How are we going to, you know, be mindful of the past? We have a rich history here in our city. A lot of folks have spent a lot of time investing in those particular things that are, you know, hallmarks of what makes us a community. And how are we going to carefully steer that ship? I just hope that you can opine about that, because I think when some folks see a proposal such as this, they get a little bit nervous about the type of change that this represents. And, you know, I get a little bit fearful too, you know, what are we going to, what are we changing here? And so I wonder if you could talk to those folks who see this plan and look at this particular plan and get a little bit nervous about that, about what that means for the programs that they support and the things that they have invested and placed their time in, in this community.
Thank you, Councilmember Loman, Mr. Mayor, and councilmembers. It's a good question, and here's how I'd respond to it in a couple of ways. First of all, the fact that this was a consensus-based process, like I said before, has a lot of power, but I also think it means that some of the more, depending on your perspective, ambitious or radical, whatever adjective you want to use to describe, ideas in the process weren't reflected in the plan, because it had to get the commitment from everybody to support it, right? And there were, in the course of those discussions, I'm not going to violate the confidentiality of the room, but there were issues that a number of people felt really, really strongly about, but we couldn't get everybody in support. And so those got left on the cutting room floor, right? And I think what this plan does is it represents the highest form of aspiration that a representative sample of our community could fully support. So if anybody's wondering, what in this plan should I be worried about? I would be more worried about not being able to achieve our aspirations that most of the community can support, as opposed to what those aspirations are, because I think they are very reflective of where the community is. The second thing I would say is that a lot of the decisions that are going to be made moving forward are going to be made by the city council. We are never going to separate ourselves from the fact that the city council is inherently a political body. You are elected officials, you have an election certificate that demonstrates that you have the requisite knowledge and wisdom to make decisions, and the city council isn't always going to agree on things. So there are going to be things that we don't have unanimous support. In a democratic process, that's okay, and that's probably healthy, right? But the really important part of that process is recognizing that as part of our commitment to engagement, the thing that we have to get better about is being clear upfront about what people can expect for their participation in the process, going back to the spectrum of engagement. And being clear with people, here's the decision that we're going to be asking the city council to make, here's the process for including people in that decision-making, and here's how your input is going to be factored, so that people at least have the understanding on the front end about what we're going to do with that input, and what level of influence it will have in the decision-making process. Ultimately, any decision that's made by the council is going to be a decision that the seven council members are going to have to stand behind, either as a group or as a majority, and that's not going to change. But the process of getting there and part of our community engagement commitment has to change.
And I think that's a good point, Councilmember Loman, that you brought up. And as I look at core values here, the thing that caught me, that I liked best, the second core value, the transformation will come through collective courage and willingness to take risks. And obviously, I mean, the word transformation means, you know, thorough change, and the implication there being that it's all bad, we're throwing it out, we're starting over again, and that's certainly not the case in any way, shape, or form of what we're looking at here. But we're also looking at a time in our city, in our community, in our world, where transformation is necessary, that art of change, that movement forward absolutely has to take place, and if it doesn't, there, I think, are very negative consequences. And I always appreciated, through our discussion on this, and I remember the discussion specifically around this core value, this notion of collective courage and the willingness to take risks. I mean, I've talked a lot about being bold, and it's basically just another way of saying that, to have the collective courage and then collectively take those risks. And to Jamie's point, this isn't a willy-nilly, just throw things at the wall, see what's going to stick. This is going to be a decision by the city council, it's going to be recommendations, of course, by the staff as we bring them forward, it's going to be, certainly, there will be community feedback for all the different discussions that we're going to have, and, I mean, frankly, I hope there is that courage, that there is that willingness to take risks, that there is that willingness to be bold, but understanding that it has to be for the best of the community. We're not just, we're not just making this up, we're not just, you know, going willy-nilly, we've got a plan ahead, and the risks that we take, that collective courage, it's thoughtful, and it moves the community forward in a lot of ways. I think the facilitators said to us, this was a core value that they had never seen before, the notion of being willing to take risks. I mean, that's a strong statement for a community to make. But to your point, that makes some people uncomfortable, and I get that. I get that. Councilmember Coulter.
Well, Mayor, you actually just pretty much took the words right out of my mouth. I would just add that I would challenge the notion that possession of an election certificate implies any particular knowledge or anything like that.
That may have been a little bit of shining of the council.
Councilmember DeLaSandro.
As someone who was pretty much only involved in the last part of this, I'll take whatever credit you're willing to give me on that front. I want to just thank, absolutely, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the folks as well. I'm along for the ride a lot with you on this, in the sense that, you know, this is my first foray as an elected official and you're representative, and so I too feel like I'm taking a bit of a leap of faith, if you will, along with the community, which I think is wonderful. So thank you. Pastor Olivares said, lead, influence, and inspire. You all should feel very comfortable and proud of yourselves that you did, in fact, lead, that you are, in fact, influencing, and certainly, for my sake, you have inspired me tonight, so thank you for that. I really do appreciate that. You know, when I think about the, so to Councilmember Loman's point about, you know, whether or not we, as a collective, can get comfortable with this, when I think of the notion of connected, welcomed, valued, environmental health, individual health, and equitable economic growth, those are themes that just in my, you know, three months here on the council so far have resonated, I guess it's four almost now, have reson, you know, those have been thematic for us, and I think that that's a really important thing to take away as a community, that there is an alignment between what you have presented tonight and what we have been talking about and hoping to work on. And that's a really fantastic thing to walk away from, gives me a lot of hope, and gives me a lot of, I think, you know, it should give us all a little extra courage, if you will, to be okay with that, because you're telling us here, you know, through your influence, that that's the direction you'd like us to go as well. So I'm certainly excited about that. I am a data nerd, as you all who have watched me on council so far, I don't know, I don't have enough information here to understand how we're going to measure things yet, and I'm super excited to be working with you, Mr. Sable, on that front, to understand that. And so I think that will be where we spend, you know, the next bit of time is to really understand if the things that we choose are the right ways to measure that, and I hope we'll all give ourselves some grace and some flexibility there and be willing to pivot as we need to, to, you know, to change those things if they're not the right things to be looking at. Yeah. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Does Member Nelson anything to add?
I would have passed, but never want to leave you out, Sean. I appreciate that, Mayor. But I'll be very brief, I haven't had dinner yet, and I'm sure people would have better things to do at their evening, so thank you for spending your time on this, it's greatly appreciated. One of the things that I've always focused on is that I'm here to serve the community, and for you to take your time to put together a document that describes the vision of this community, the mission of this community, what the priorities of this community are just makes my job, our jobs, that much easier. So thank you for taking your time to do that. Thank you, city manager, for leading this effort, Mr. Sable, for, I know you were very, very engaged in it, very much appreciate that, and everyone on staff that worked on it as well. It is very, I think, we talked prior to this about taking risks, we talked prior to this about engagement, and this is the embodiment of both of those principles that this council has asked our staff to do, and people stepped up to the plate to do it, so thank you.
Counselor, is there anything else? If not, counsel, I'm going to take the impetus here, and I'm going to move that we adopt the Bloomington Tomorrow Together strategic plan.
Second?
We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Carter to adopt the Bloomington Tomorrow Together strategic plan. Any further council discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oged. Motion carries 7-0.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, one last point, since we've now adopted it. I appreciate very much that endorsement of support from the city council. In addition to the folks who presented tonight, there are a lot of other people in the room here who are either part of the core team, or the action team, or the measurement team, but I'm going to ask them all to stand up, so that we can publicly thank them for the work that they did, so. It was a lot of work, and I also want to acknowledge the city staff who participated in this process, too, literally dozens, not just like the three dozen I mentioned who helped with the interviews, but the number of people it takes to support the core team and the events that we put on, our outreach and engagement staff, our legal staff, our finance staff, I mean, it's literally dozens of people. Every one of them was integral to what happened here. So I am truly grateful for the, this is not an exaggeration, couple thousand of hours of effort that went into this process.
of effort that went into this process. I think it's a genuinely wonderful work product, and I'm really excited to move forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brugge. And how fitting is it that as we talk about this, the sound of music is being sung next door? It's like, it's almost angelic. Moving on to item three on our agenda is our consent business. Councilmember DeLisandro has our consent agenda tonight. Councilmember DeLisandro?
I do thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a, we have a lot of holds tonight. I haven't heard anyone, I guess, since we started tonight, but we have 3.1, 3.4, thanks to Councilmember Carter and Councilmember Lohman. 3.6 and 3.7 were held by Councilmember Nelson. And then 3.10 was held by all of us. I think one, no, it was Carter, Lohman, and myself. So having said that, unless there are any other holds, I would move the approval or adoption of 3.2, 3.3, 3.5, 3.8, 3.9, and 3.11 of our consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember DeLisandro and a second by Councilmember Lohman to adopt the consent business as stated. Further council questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Why don't we hold off on 3.1, councilmember, and move to item 3.4?
Yes.
And I believe that was Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Carter?
Carter and then Lohman, yep.
Thank you, Mayor. So I guess my question, I would just be curious to know how those employees who are union, how their compensation compares to non-union? And then also how their compensation and the positions that they're in compare to those in other cities? Like, are we pretty much on par with other cities in terms of their wages and benefits or not? Thank you.
Mr. Sable?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmembers, Councilmember Carter, I will try to do my best. The first kind of framework that we use is that we have to follow the law. So the state has a Local Government Pay Equity Act, which requires us to be, to create a compensation system that eliminates disparities against women. And then there's a couple of criteria. It's more, it's more establishing equity. And one of the things that we just got, and we'll actually bring to a future council meeting, is on April 19th, we just got our certification for creating a pay plan that complies with state law. So that's kind of our first measure. The second component, then, is we do look at how we compare to the marketplace. And it's hard in cities in that a lot of times, police officers and firefighters are only public sector employees. And so you can only look at the marketplace for public sector employees. For those positions that you could have a job in the private sector, like a comparable administrative assistant or an engineering technician, we look at the whole private market and the public sector market. And we try to compare our data against what other people might get in the private sector. And so we have this sort of balancing act of, how do we create an environment that is competitive and that we're not losing people to other jurisdictions, but also not overpaying for certain services? And so our staff routinely shares information with other cities. And so we've kind of have established, you know, there's about 33, I call them kind of the large suburban communities, or those communities with more than 25,000 residents. And then we kind of consider that to be sort of our labor market and comparisons. And we eliminate the cities of Minneapolis and St. Paul because they have historically richer contracts and they have more challenges as an employer, so that they don't serve us as a true comparable. But some smaller communities like Richfield, which doesn't really match our population in a true sense, often share some of the same demographics or maybe the same income levels. And so we try to create a labor market analysis that sort of reflects Bloomington. And so by and large, the city has historically paid near the top of the marketplace in most classes. It's not exclusively there, but generally near there. So I would argue that we are always sort of at least in the top 10 in the marketplace because this is a place that people, frankly, right? It's a remarkable community where people want to be.
I've heard something about that.
I actually didn't plan that. It's just sort of, but it is, we want to attract a talented workforce. We also have to balance that with the cost because a pay increase in one year has compounding impacts on para and other kind of outer expenses a year that are carried out after that. So with respect to, you asked a question about how do we treat union and non-union. For the non-union positions, we establish a pay range that we use. We do a general wage adjustment, and we kind of see what the marketplace is, and we set a standard. And so for this year, the general wage adjustment for non-represented was 3%. And the council approved that at the end of 20, or, sorry, December of 2021 for this calendar year. We generally try to get the labor negotiations done in advance of that. In this case, we weren't able to do that, but we also, that became sort of, and I'll maybe overshare, but as a negotiating tactic, it's very hard when you have a floor and a ceiling as a number. So the others, the labor unions know that 3% is generally numbered, and we're not going to go below. And then they actively seek to make that number go higher and higher through other negotiations. And so it is a balancing act that we try to do, but we try to be consistent because one of the measures that we look for is internal equity, that we're treating non-represented and represented similarly, but knowing that each side has kind of its own hot-button issues, which is why in this case, you know, the city might give on boot allowance because the price of boots is higher. And so we're willing to give there. And so it is a true negotiation, and we try to create balance, but know that it's always going to be, there will always be more demands than there are dollars to deliver. And I hope I answered your question fully.
Councilmember Lohman, you had questions on this as well?
Yeah, I had, I had a number of questions, you know. And, you know, I'm going to be honest, I'd rather not ask them in open, because that kind of puts the city manager and assistant manager kind of in a tricky, tricky position. I certainly have had, now this is probably the third time, this particular group of folks have come to, come to talk to me. And so I'm starting to get really concerned about it. Personally, I'd like to just lay this over so some of my questions can be asked and answered, so I can be assured that there is this concern around equity. You know, we just passed earlier today, just a minute ago, you know, our new strategic plan. Now, I don't know what implications that has of doing that, or if there's other council members, maybe they feel comfortable supporting this today, but I'm not comfortable supporting this, as written with the concerns that I've had, especially now, this is the second or third time that I've had this particular group come and talk to me. So I'll reserve my questions for later, or I won't be supporting this today.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, and Councilmember Lohman, I think it's important to remember that the collective bargaining unit has voted to ratify this agreement. So they have, their members have, said that these are terms that are acceptable to them. If the council is questioning of the terms and conditions of the agreement, I would recommend that we send it to a closed session because labor relations is a reason that the city council can go into closed session and have those discussions. But I, you know, if that's, if that's a concern the council has, that this is not an agreement that you wish to support after the union has ratified it, we just need to understand why that is so that staff can do a better job of entering into negotiations in the future or for going back and ratifying this one. My recommendation would be to still proceed forward this evening.
Counsel, is there, so Councilmember Lohman, did you want to make a formal motion on this to lay this over and then ultimately, perhaps not tonight, but in the future, get into a closed session to discuss this more in depth?
Yeah, I personally would like to, like to move that. I understand what you're saying, but some of the questions I want to ask, especially since this is the second time, so I understand that there is, you know, that there is agreement that's there. Sometimes these agreements are, are come to because that's what you got to do. And so I think that I personally would like to have a deeper, deeper dive into this, especially since, again, this is not the first time this group has come to me. So, you know, if there isn't support out there, if there isn't a second, I'll understand that. I will vote this down, but I would still ask that we, as we go into negotiations in the future, that we do have that conversation. Because I want to be sure that we are able to, you know, as we have already laid out earlier, you know, have that equity there, that feeling. So.
Just a second, Councilmember Coulter, do we have a second on Councilmember Lohman's motion? The motion was to lay this over. I think the data uncertain, but to give an opportunity for the council to discuss this in closed session in, sometime in the near future. Councilmember Coulter?
Well, sorry. My question relates directly to that motion.
Okay.
Just a quick question for the city manager, assistant city manager. Is there, is there any consequence to any sort of part of this equation that might occur by virtue of laying this over and delaying passage of these contracts? Or?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Coulter, the first-of-the-year adjustments have not been received by the members of the unit. Until there is a contract that's ratified, some of those changes aren't going to be made. They eventually do get made. I would say that the timing of when you approve them is probably okay. I'm looking at Mike to see if there's anything regarding the decision itself that you could foresee would be a problem.
Mayor, councilmembers, city manager, Brugge, the, what we will do is we do a retroactive pay form from the last payroll date, which would have been December 27th, '21. That's just how the calendar worked out. We can, we can extend that out, and we would just, essentially, those individuals that had a new contract would have a larger check at some future date. But they would be entitled to that dollar amount from the effective date of December 27th of 2021.
So again, counsel, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Ask one more time, do we have a second? With that, the motion dies without a second. Do we have a motion to approve then, item 3.4 on our consent business?
So moved?
Second. Motion by Councilmember DeLisandro, second by Councilmember Martin, to approve item 3.4 in the consent business. Hearing no further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries six one with Lohman opposing. Moving on to item 3.6, with 3.6, I believe, Councilmember Nelson, that was you?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Before I jump into that, is it possible for me just to follow up on Councilmember Lohman's? Is it still possible to do a closed session to talk about future labor negotiations so it doesn't go to a fourth time for him?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, we still have contracts that we are negotiating. And if there are questions that you believe are going to be pertinent to those contracts before they are ratified, I would suggest that you can say yes, you want to go in and discuss some of those issues.
Okay.
Just didn't know how that works. So I'll go back to 3.6, which we're actually on the agenda for. Two, I know that we had talked about different options for this intersection. It's old Shakopee and Xerxes for those watching. And I just wanted to know, is this finalized? That this is what we're doing? We're buying those lands? The plan is all finalized? Is that all done?
Mr. Keel?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson. Yes, you had held a hearing and ordered that project, so that project is proceeding. And this is kind of the final step, is to finally secure the right-of-way if it's needed.
Great. And then just a quick follow-up to that. The thing does talk about using eminent domain, but these are voluntary purchases. You negotiated that with them. It's just a matter of process that we're using eminent domain. Is that?
The complication in these remaining ones are that the, there's been a negotiated settlement, the amount that's being proposed, with the property owners, but we have not received the necessary consent from mortgage companies, which is oftentimes kind of one of the complications in right-of-way acquisition, is that a faraway mortgage company is not very responsive to the needs of processing the paperwork. So the way that that gets actually processed is through the court system, and we're anticipating that the final awards for, will be the same as those that are negotiated. So the price has been negotiated. The process will be kind of finalized through the eminent domain process because of the mortgage company consent requirement.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that we had reached an amicable, amicable agreement with the residents of Bloomington here.
Yes, we have.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Nelson, if you're satisfied?
I am.
If you could make a motion for item 3.6?
I would move item 3.6.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Nelson, second by Councilmember Lohman, to accept item 3.6 in the consent business. Hearing no further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. You also had held, Councilmember Nelson, item 3.7, which is the Normandale Lake Restrooms and Park Maintenance Garage Building Service Agreement.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just always fascinated by restrooms, so I just wanted to hold this. I did have a conversation earlier with the city manager, and if it's all right, I'd like to hold this one over just to get some additional information about the entire scope of the project, just to make sure it makes sense and I'm fully clear on what's involved in this project. And I think, according to what I heard from the city manager, that wasn't problematic in terms of the project, but I don't know a date when that would be or...
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember Nelson, we should have the information that you asked in the questions available in the next couple of days. So we could certainly have this item ready to come back at the subsequent council meeting.
Okay.
So May 9th is the next meeting. If you want to table it till then, that's fine.
Okay. I would table it.
So if you could, so Councilmember Nelson, you're making a motion to table item 3.7 until the May 9th meeting?
That's exactly what I want to do.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilmember Nelson, a second by Councilmember DeLisandro, to table item 3.7 till May 9th. Hearing no further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Item 3.10, I think we had a cast of thousands who wanted to talk about this one. Councilmember Lohman, why don't we start with you? Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you, Mayor. I know we had a brief conversation about this, and I know, manager, what I wanted to really have done is, for this 3.10, is for staff to kind of give a, an overview of this because this did come to the Sustainability Commission. And to say that I was outraged is kind of understatement. Because my understanding was, was that we were going to, what this, this particular thing was around the water park and the sustainability measures in which that Bloomington and we as a council has kind of have already said that we wanted to see happen. And it seemed like the process had already kind of left the train station, as it were, and that we weren't going to have the ability to have conversation about that or to try to influence that conversation. I don't know if staff wants to give a little more. I see Carl wants to kind of give a little more of an overview. I don't, I don't want to...
I can give maybe a broader overview, if you will, and then I would ask, I'm going to come up if there's specifics about the topics that are of concern.
And I apologize, I should have, for context, I should have mentioned for folks watching, this is regarding the Sustainability Commission Water Park Subcommittee. So, Mr. Keel?
As Councilmember Lohman had noted, there are a number of issues in that development that are of concern, that the Sustainability Commission would like to have input onto for the water park development project. That project is moving rather quickly. And so if they were to just go to the scheduled monthly Sustainability Commission meetings, there wouldn't be really enough time to adequately contribute to that project. So what's being proposed, and this is kind of part of the working rules of procedure for the commission, is that they would form a subcommittee that would be smaller, more nimble, be able to review things in a more timely fashion, and to provide adequate input to that process as it's, as it's going on its rather quick, quick process. I know that the commission had sent a memo with a kind of a listing of types of topics and more specifics, and I'm sure Emma would be happy to answer those types of questions if you have them.
And Mayor, if I could just ask one thing, and this isn't specific. One of my main concerns at the meeting was that there was part of the materials that had, my understanding was, had already been purchased, so that we could not comment on that at all. And maybe I misunderstood that, but I just wanted to just be sure that, because when I talked to the, when I talked with the mayor, I just, I expressed my concern really about that, that, you know, that I thought that we were going to be, you know, working hand-in-hand with them all to try to ensure that this is a sustainable process. So maybe I misunderstood, but I just wanted to just be sure that all aspects of this project are still on the table, that our Sustainable Commission, this council, this body can still comment on that and give some recommendation. I know we don't have a Sustainable Development Program. I know that that's been, Mayor, one of your main projects that you've been working on. And so it just made me think about, you know, we don't have that yet, and we need to get that done. So is there any answer to that?
At that point, I think the item you're talking about is that the developer has indicated that they need to order steel. And in this current construction environment, with the supply chain things and those types of things, steel, to be able to have steel for a project, you need to order it rather early in the process. Generally speaking, what that early order means is it tells the supplier that there's a certain quantity, a rough quantity of steel that's going to be needed, the exact types of I-beams or... The exact types of I-beams or the way it's fabricated is not determined yet, that the project is not designed yet. And that would happen at a subsequent phase. So the ordering of steel is really the obligation of the developer and that is their, they understand that as they go through the process, they can order steel. They don't have all the approvals they need. So I don't believe in any way that their ordering steel impedes you from being honest or to change the process as, as.
Okay. That, that's not the way that I understood it. I think, thanks for the clarification because it sounded like to me, when it was presented from, from staff at, at the meeting last Monday, that it was all materials. And I'm, I'm just, I'm glad that that, that that's clarified. Because that's the way I understood it. Maybe I misunderstood.
I, I.
And Mr. Mayor and council members, let me, let me jump in real quickly here. Shane is also available online. Shane Redling, our Port Authority Administrator. He's sharing with me, the steel hasn't been ordered yet. The triple five has to put a down payment in May, but they have not done that yet. Staff is supportive of the subcommittee to work on this. I think that the, the project, the property owners, the project development team heard from the council, the interest in making sure that this is a sustainably developed project. And I think they understand the expectation, but I don't think there's any, anything that's too far down the road here that's going to, that we're going to miss the boat on anything at this stage. So I think that the timing of the subcommittee is, is fine for where we're at. And I see Mr. Redling's available too, if you want to ask any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Redling, you've been listening to the discussion here. Anything to add? Any more clarifications?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Council members, council member Loman. So yeah, so the action that the council and Port Authority did on March 9th to approve the first set of documents, set aside $5 million for sustainable features that the Sustainability Commission and the council can add to the base sustainability features that the project already has in it. And the, the crux of the issue is, as Carl Keel stated, is that the lead times on some of the products in this construction environment are much, much longer than typical. If the steel hasn't been ordered, what, what the design team and Kurt Hagan have stated to us is that they have to put a down payment on some of those materials in May in order to get them many, many months in the future. And so it, it came to a, you know, one decision point was, you know, like if you're going to put PV, a PV array on the roof, we would need to shift into those shop drawings probably in June, July. So the down payment, May, you're starting to produce shop drawings for the size of steel that you need in order to get that steel on order and fabricated and so on. So it, it's, it's a function of, all of a sudden on May 9th, we've got the green light to go and a short time for them to break ground in the project and order all the materials so that they can get in the ground before it freezes up this winter. Otherwise, you wait a year and you roll the dice on what construction costs are going to be next year. But the, the idea and what the Sustainability Commission did by creating the nimble subcommittee to do that work is, I think, the right one. The other thing that we talked about even today to mitigate this, that has pluses and minuses, is to wait for the decisions on all of the sustainability features through the roughly six month process that it will take to design the rest of the water park and work with the Green Building Council to see if the project can be a LEED certified project. The problem with that is that the deal would close and we'd still have this $5 million allotment, but we wouldn't know what we'd be spending it on, if we'd be spending all of it, or if it would take maybe more than that in order to get it to be LEED certified. And so we're, we're trying to work through all that and present options to the commission and the council and the Port Authority at the upcoming meetings to best handle this. But the design team and the port staff and city staff, I think, are really committed to making sure this is a really sustainable project. It's just how do we do all of that in the short time that we have and make sure that the resources, financial and otherwise, are deployed in the best way possible?
Council member Loman?
Thank you. I think that's much better. Yeah, because I, I just was very alarmed at the end of that meeting in terms of that it was totally out of the, the boat had left the ship and there was nothing that we could do. So I appreciate that, that, that further explanation about that.
Other council members had questions on this as well. Any others? Council member, council member De La Sando?
Council member Carter had some questions too.
Thank you. I'm good. I really just wanted to elevate it. We had several questions from residents on the issue related to sustainability and the environmental impact of the water park. And so I just wanted them to see this item and, and make sure that we kind of address it publicly on camera so that people understand it's happening.
Understood. Thank you.
That was very much, Mr. Mayor, council member Carter, that was very much the same reason I was lifting it up as well. I think it, I think it's a, a smart tack to take to ensure that the, the subcommittee is available and able to move quickly to address concerns, lift them up, bring them here. I did have a, a specific question, but I think Shane, you might have answered this. I just want to get confirmation. Because, because the, the, the $5 million or so of, of additional funding that we've made available specifically for sustainability initiatives related to this has not yet been explicitly allocated or, or defined, does the sustainability subcommission, subcommittee here plan or does it hope to recommend specific activities, you know, or allocations out of those dollars? Is that part of what the charter is for them or could be for them? I don't know. I apologize. I don't quite know to whom to address that. Good to see you, Emma. Pleasure.
Mr. Mayor, council member De La Sando. My understanding is that if the Sustainability Commission is able to hold a special meeting in which all commission members can attend, that would be the first priority, but then to have a subcommittee if that is not being able to be achieved at the timeline. My understanding is that there's a variety of sustainability initiatives that the commission would like to be considered in the project. Those would be covered by using a sustainable building standard such as LEED. My understanding is that the LEED modeling will be complete by the end of this week, but none of the energy modeling has been complete to date. And since the Sustainability Commission hasn't had answers to the questions from their previous two meetings, they haven't had the information to make recommendations to date. So they're looking to have data to be able to then make recommendations. I would say my understanding of the timeframe, the ability for that group to go in depth to make specific recommendations, that might, on various aspects of the, of the construction, that might be difficult, but I think higher level recommendations and best practices is, along with the LEED certification, is what I've heard to date. I will say my understanding from having conversations with the deal, the architect, the architecture group that's now working on the sustainable building design is that the embodied carbon decisions have been made. And so that there, there are design decisions that cannot be changed at this point, but the operational decisions could be changed. So I think that's where some of the material decisions such as concrete, those decisions with the, the construction have been already been determined before the energy modeling. But now there is the opportunity to look into some of the aspects moving forward.
Thank you.
Council, further questions? Comments on this? I appreciate the questions and I think you're exactly right to, to elevate this and make sure that we talk about it and folks know that we are, that, that this is underway and that the subcommittee is being formed. I think it's an important point to make. So thanks for bringing that forward. If there are no other questions or comments on item 3.10, I'd look for a motion from council member Loman.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd be happy to, to move in once one of you guys want to.
Council member Loman.
Want to do it? Okay. Oh, we had moved to approve the establishment of a Sustainable Commission Subcommittee to review and advise plans for Mystery Cove's sustainable measures to ensure the water park meets Bloomington's sustainability goals.
Second?
Motion by council member Loman, second by council member De La Sando to accept item 3.10 in our consent business. Hearing no further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Now, if we could double back to item 3.1, our resolution to accept donations. Council member De La Sando?
Always a fun opportunity. My first time doing the donation thing. I want to thank the folks. Anytime we are, receive donations to the city from our, our community members, whether they're individuals or, or businesses, it's a, it's just another way we, we, we see testifying to the importance of, of our community as seen by our community, right? And that's the best way we can, we can see support and, and show support. In particular, this is a generous donation of $2,000 from the folks at Larkin Hoffman, who have been a leader here in Bloomington. They're headquartered here in Bloomington. They have about 150 employees in the metro area and they are very well known in the LGBTQ community for their support for initiatives like Bloomington Pride, which is what this donation is for. They've been on the, they've been a part of the Pride, Twin Cities Pride Committees for a long time. They were here with us last year in our inaugural, which is great. And they also are big supporters of the Lavender Bar Association, which supports LGBTQ attorneys throughout the cities. So very happy to, to thank them publicly and to make the motion to accept, to adopt the resolution to accept this donation as listed. Second?
Motion by council member De La Sando, second by council member Coulter to accept the donation as specified in item 3.1. Hearing no further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. Thank you much, council member De La Sando.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I will say, it, it was not on purpose that as the openly gay member of the council, I got to do that one, but I was super excited about it anyway. Should have worn my pin tonight. Thank you.
As we move on to item four, our hearings, resolutions and ordinances, council, I'd ask you to take a look at the clock. We're already to 8:10 and we have four public hearings here and then a couple of other items in our organizational business that we need to discuss as well. So if we could, if we could manage our time efficiently and correctly, it would be greatly appreciated. Moving on to item 4.1, our first public hearing of the evening. This is regarding our long discussed food truck ordinance. And Sean James from our planning department is going to lead us through this. Good evening, Mr. James.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thanks for having me back in person here tonight. I'll try to.
Good to see you in person. Welcome back.
I'll try to share my slides here in a minute. But yeah, this first item here tonight is on food truck standards. And I'm, oh, still waiting on the button here to be able to share my slides. Okay, thank you. And we can jump to the next slide. So a little bit of background. So this has been, you know, first discussed back in 2019 with study meetings with the planning commission and the council at that time. And the spectrum might look familiar to, this was, you know, discussed more in depth at those study meetings, you know, looking at whether we want to take a more prohibitive approach or more permissive approach with food trucks. And, you know, looking at the different options, you know, whether we just allow food trucks with certain uses or, you know, be more permissive and allow them, you know, really anywhere off-street, subject to certain standards. And so that's kind of where we ended up here on more of that right side of the spectrum. And so staff prepared an ordinance early 2020 and brought that before the planning commission. You know, at that meeting, we did receive substantial feedback from the food truck association in the area. And planning commission suggested to continue the item and consider creating more flexibility for food trucks. And so, you know, we edited the ordinance, brought it back in March that same year. And planning commission was much more in favor of some of those more flexible standards. And, you know, that ordinance that received a recommendation from the commission is substantially the same as what's before you tonight. There's a few minor edits, just for clarity. But then you'll recall in May 2020, the item was continued indefinitely by the council, given the onset of the pandemic and, you know, harsh business conditions for the food industry. So before you again here tonight, there was a study meeting a, a couple of months ago, received direction to bring this back. And so, you know, asking council to consider adopting the ordinance before you tonight. And so quick background, you know, we allow food trucks today in select circumstances. So as part of events, and if they're incidental to a primary use on a site. So for instance, if it's a company, you know, a company picnic where they're only serving employees, then that would be allowed. But otherwise, the zoning code prohibits food trucks. And so really the purpose of tonight's ordinance is, you know, one, we need to amend the zoning code to clarify that, you know, how they're allowed, how they're not allowed, specify standards, because there's no definition in the zoning code today. And we also saw an opportunity to create a separate license for food trucks. And so, you know, I won't cover each of these, just summarize, you know, food trucks can obviously bring, you know, more vitality to an area, certainly help liven up, say, empty parking lots. And then for the operators, sometimes they serve as like a business ingebiter. That can be a way to test out of market, you know, introduce a new food idea to areas that, you know, don't have those. Now, on the con side of things, there might be enforcement concerns. You know, food trucks are mobile, so they can be difficult to track down. You know, it has come up, we've heard from a few restaurant owners, concerns about competition or say unfair playing field between the two. So that is a, a concern. I will add that we are requiring food trucks to be associated with a licensed commissary kitchen. And so, you know, that kitchen could be located outside of the city, but still subject to zoning code requirements wherever they may be. And so, you know, just summarizing, as part of the ordinance, there's a new license. And then there's standards I'll, I'll cover quickly, but they pertain to operation and location of food trucks. And just to say upfront, these standards I'll talk about next would only apply to food trucks operating outside of special events. You know, if they're with an event like Carrotage Days, they receive separate approval, not subject to these standards. And so the license then, so all food trucks in an event or not need to be licensed, you know, for food itself, or food safety purposes. Today, the license options are on the left. It's a temporary food license and most food trucks fit under the complex food preparation category. And the, the license itself is per location. And so we're proposing a, a separate mobile food unit license. That would be an option to just be a, a license per truck. And then the operator could locate anywhere in the city. So really it, it offers a more streamlined approach for both, you know, staff and food trucks. And if any food truck operates more than, say, twice in a year in the city, it would save them money as well. And so the way it would work is, you know, a food truck comes in for a license application. I'd point out, they do need to be, you know, indicate where they're associated with that commissary kitchen there. And then at a later date, they would come in and get inspected by the environmental health staff. And then before operating anywhere, the food truck would need, you know, property owner permission and then, you know, be subject to those operational location standards. So as far as operation, again, just summarizing, you know, there's hours of operation, standards, signs attached to the vehicles, not interfering with circulation. And then really the idea with these standards is that the food truck leave at the end of the day, you know, they operate and then end of the day, they go park at their kitchen or restaurant. We did build in an exception in this, you know, if a food truck wants to operate at a rest, at its, at a restaurant, that happens to be its commissary kitchen, well, then it could also park there. So just to clarify that. And then we're proposing this as a pilot project too. You know, the idea is that we learn what's worked, what hasn't this next year, and then return to you and provide that feedback and decide if any changes need to be made. And so as far as location, you know, I mentioned off-street, you know, probably a parking area. And then no more than three food trucks at any given time on a property. And then we settled on 200 feet away from a restaurant entrance. So that's the medium blue color there on the screen. So it largely captures, you know, adjacent properties. And then a separate set of standards where food trucks would operate in more residential settings. So, you know, in this case, if, if a house wants, you know, a food truck with a with a graduation party, they could just have the one truck at a time, and then, a three-day per-year limit, and, you know, a little bit more narrow hours of operation, and, you know, service intended to be just for those guests of the, of the party there, you know, it's not a commercial operation in that residential area. And this is the one case where we would allow food trucks to be on the street, just given that some driveways are sloped and, you know, make the operation not doable for food trucks. You know, as far as outreach, there has been engagement with a few restaurant owners and the food truck association, and so, you know, corresponded with them, you know, a couple of years ago, and more recently, we have sent out memos and emails pretty broadly to different interest groups, and our food collaborative email subscribe has over 1,000 subscribers, and then, I have reached out to a handful of restaurants, too, to just ask about economic impacts due to the pandemic, as well as to get feedback on this ordinance. And so, with that, Planning Commission and staff do recommend adopting tonight's ordinance, and then staff recommends a summary publication as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. James. Two questions that I jotted down quickly here, and then we'll get to any council questions here. You mentioned the, obviously, they have to be associated with a commissary kitchen, and if it's off-site or in a different community, will we, will Bloomington inspectors be going to a different community to inspect those?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, no, not necessarily. We do have our environmental health manager here to help answer some of those questions, but I'll let her lead.
Great question, Mr. Mayor. We are very closely tied in the environmental health field here in the metro, so if a commissary kitchen's in Minneapolis, it's very easy to call up my colleagues in Minneapolis and say, hey, you know, XYZ food trucks operating here or wants a Bloomington license. They say there are commissary kitchens at this address, do you have a license? And, oh, by the way, how do they do on their food safety inspections? So, it's, it's quick and easy, and same goes for us. If we have a commissary kitchen here, you know, we would get the same calls.
Thank you, that's, that's helpful, and it's, but it's not a matter of, if the kitchen is in Minneapolis and they have to follow regulation A, B, and C, that Bloomington then puts on D, E, and F?
Good question. We all use the state's food code, which is Minnesota Rules 4626, so we're pretty standardized across city, county, or state-level jurisdictions. So, it's pretty much the same rules.
Okay, that makes sense. Good, thank you. I appreciate that. And then, along the lines of standardization, you, you mentioned the, the, the operating times, and you mentioned a 10 o'clock end time, and I'm trying to remember the one or two times I was at a brew pub, and there may have been a food truck outside. I'm trying to remember, is, are we, is that consistent with other communities, or do, are, are our food trucks allowed to stay longer at other communities?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, in the ordinance, we tried to match what other cities allow for food trucks. We did build in an exception for, say, taprooms, cocktail rooms that happen to operate later, in that, you know, those uses require, you know, some approval by Planning Commission Council, and so, as part of that, they could, you know, get approval to operate food trucks later also.
Okay, good. Thank you, appreciate that. Council, any additional questions regarding this? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to follow up on a couple of things. The commissary kitchens, is it typical in other cities that, that's a requirement, that they be associated with a specific one? And then, I think there were some comments in our packet that the food truck itself is a licensed kitchen, and so, can you just explain that requirement to me? If it's, if it's normal, and why are we looking at doing it?
Ms. Moore?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, our concern is with, that it is pretty normal that a food truck needs a commissary kitchen to prep their food and wash their utensils, store their product. These type of things cannot happen out of a home or a non-licensed kitchen. So, a lot of food trucks do need to prep ahead and maybe even partially cook items and cool them down, and have them ready to go to turn around and produce food quickly from a food truck. So, you know, that is our concern. I, I suppose somebody could make the case that I don't need a kitchen and demonstrate to us how they do that, but I, I haven't really seen that myself.
So, one of the questions, I don't know if this would apply, if this is the same thing, but I go to various festivals and things like that, and they have like the mini-donut stand, and I think they just cook it all right there. I mean, do they need a separate place, or is that a different use? Am I, am I misunderstanding that?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, mini-donuts are one of those very basic things where you have a dry powder, and you add liquid, and you have grease, right? And you fry it off. So, you know, it, it might be possible that they don't need to prep ahead their batter and things, but, you know, I would ask where they store, you know, their back supply of ingredients, or if they're buying it every time before they show up at an event. I mean, you know, these would be questions that we would go through with applicants.
Okay. And then, along these lines, so is the requirement that they go back to the commissary kitchen after they're here, and how would we know if they do if it's in a different community?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, that's a good question. I think our point is mainly that the food truck doesn't sit in one spot and never move, and we're looking for, most food trucks that we would license would be ones that potentially, you know, make a meal, and they do need to, you know, go and resupply and get their equipment. They have to empty water tanks and refill them, you know, there's a lot of things that they need to do to maintain that food truck and have a place to store it, so that it's not stored at a home in our community, things like that. So I think that's our expectation, and especially to the fact that, you know, we're running a pilot, we're probably going to learn a lot about this in the next year, I think, and, you know, figure things out through maybe some mistakes, learn from our mistakes, or, or grow, maybe I look at it that way.
Last question, I think, for now. The fees, there was discussion in this, and I believe that those were reduced from the original proposal, and my question on this is just, they're consistent with what it costs us to provide the inspection service? Is that accurate? We, you, you're feeling comfortable with that?
I think I am comfortable, and, and I, I look at it that our goal is to inspect them twice a year. So, and, you know, we have concerns about, you know, you know, how do we do this? We're used to, you know, getting a license for a food event at a specific ti, place and time, and we're used to going out there and inspecting them before the event starts. This will be a little different, where we'll have licensed food trucks, we're going to have to reach out to them and say, well, where are you operating, so we can stop by and visit with you and check out the trucks? So, we'll be learning how to do that best, too, over the next year.
Okay. Can I ask one more question, Mayor? That just raised another question. So, once they're licensed, they don't have to like register where they're going to be that, like, they don't have to get a permit or something to go to that even? Okay. So once you're, once they have a license, it's done, they can make arrangements with businesses and residents and go with it? Okay, thank you.
Council, additional questions? I see no hands going up. So thank you, both, and what I will do right now is open this public hearing. This is item 4.1, this is a public hearing on our food truck ordinance. Anyone here in the council chambers who wishes to speak to item 4.1 this evening? If so, please come forward. See anyone coming forward? Good evening, Lea. Do we have anyone on the phone who wishes to speak to item 4.1?
If anyone wishes to speak on that specific agenda, please press star 1. Once again, if anyone wishes to speak on Agenda 4.1, please press star 1 on your telephone keypad.
I'm not hearing anyone.
I do not see anyone.
Okay, very good, thank you, Lea. Last call in the chambers here, anyone wishing to speak to item 4.1? Please, come forward, please. Good evening, if you could state your name, please, and then eventually, if we need you to sign in, just so we know who you are.
Yeah, absolutely.
Very good, please.
My name is Andy Kistner, resident in Bloomington. My wife and I own a food truck. And, I mean, this is our second year earning the, running the food truck. We've been selling food for about four years, various farmers' markets. Pardon me, I'm a little nervous. And, I mean, last year, as far as like cleanliness and safety, we were inspected probably 10 different times. These food trucks are constantly getting inspected, so, I mean, you can put your mind at ease that, you know, these trucks are going to be very hygienic and clean, because we're checked all the time. And I just want to thank you guys for considering this. Some of our favorite events in other communities have been, you know, neighborhood get-togethers. Wonderful way to, to bring the community together, you know? Somebody will have a, you know, neighborhood association reach out, have a truck there, the whole, all the neighbors get together, come enjoy the truck. So, I just wanted to kind of put my two cents in, thank everyone for, you know, even, you know, considering this new ordinance.
Thank you. What, what, what's your food truck?
Muddy Tiger Indian Street Food.
Ah, okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if, if you don't know, they're so good. I'm so happy to know, Jody, absolutely. Highly recommend.
My wife is actually the chef.
Anyone else in the council chambers wish to speak? Seeing no one coming forward, Council, I will look for a motion to close the public hearing at item 4.1.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coulter, second by Councilmember Carter, to close the public hearing at item 4.1. No further, no further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. So, Council, this is one, I think, as we've talked about before, this we, this is a three-year journey on, on food trucks for us here. Do we have any questions or comments, or anything we want to talk about more? Councilmember Loman?
I, I just had one question for staff. One of my concerns about this, you know, certainly I'm not, I'm not opposed to food trucks, I, I am a frequent food truck person, as long as they are gluten-free and other items. I am concerned about how, at the end of the year, that we would know if there is any impact to some of our small businesses. And so, I'm just concerned if there's a way from a development side to, you know, kind of lock it and go, hey, here's how many small businesses we had at this point in time, and then, here's how many, you know, at the end of that, that period of time, just so we have a, not that we, not that we would change how we do this, but it may just be informative in terms of how, and, you know, it's tough, because, you know, you've got a number of other policies that we're, we're implementing, so I do, I am cognizant of that some of those may have other impacts to our small businesses, but I do want to see if there's a way to, to at least track that, especially in our, with, with, with the restaurant industry.
That's a good point, Councilmember Loman. If we're going to call this a pilot program, if we're going to measure something, that, I'm, I'm assuming we know what we're going to measure and be able to put numbers on this, and be able to evaluate it, not just anecdotally, but actually with some, some hard data. Mr. James?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, Councilmember Loman. And so, yeah, we did talk about the anecdotal evidence, as well as, you know, license, you know, number of issued licenses. You know, we're certainly open to feedback on how to collect those metrics and what those look like, and so that's, you know, good feedback to reach out more to small businesses, I assume, restaurant, food operators. There's a handful that have been more responsive than others, it's certainly a busy industry, so.
And I guess my question would be, is there a way for us, from a licensing standpoint at all, to measure how many, well, let's say, restaurants that we have operating in the city of Bloomington that would fit in a small business type thing? You know, I'm not the measurement expert here, I know that there's another council member here that may be a measurement expert. That's just sort of my idea, that I just wonder, you know, that they may have some ideas.
Ms. Moore?
Mayor, Councilmember Loman, that's a great question. We do put our restaurants into categories based on types of food, and I think we just know our restaurants really well, but the restaurant industry is a tough business, as we all know, and, you know, quite honestly, there has been a lot of turnover through COVID, and I think the best way to stay in touch, or, or figure out how places are doing is, we're at our restaurants at least twice a year, doing routine inspections and any follow-up, so we do have a good rapport with all of our licensees, and I think just the conversations and, and such. We do have a category of large and small, you know, I, I would assume that our largest restaurants aren't going to be affected so much by food trucks, but those that we call it type 2, or a small, or you might call it a mom-and-pop type of restaurant, you know, those, those are things that we can categorize and see how many we have, and, and just know from, you know, our, talking to our licensees, how people are doing, or if people were to go out of business, or I think it, it's also possible it could create new business ideas for folks, too, so.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
You ready for some data? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I, I think that a great answer, actually, Lynn, and thank you for that, because I do want to acknowledge, I mean, I know that every time, like, you look across the ci, this, the country, every time a food truck ordinance shows up, there is a concern that it has a, a negative correlation effect to resident, to resident restaurants. The data doesn't support that. There's a, there's some pretty interesting studies, 12-year studies done by like the Institute of Justice, for example, across 1,000 counties in America, that says there's actually a positive correlation between food trucks and restaurants, because, to your point, oftentimes, people will try a food truck concept, and then open a brick and mortar as a result of being so successful. And so, while it doesn't necessarily impact the closing of restaurants, new restaurants may pop up as a result. And in addition to that, the, the, the data suggests, anyway, that even, you know, in a downturning in, in economy, it's an opportunity for restaurants who may have had to shutter their doors, for example, to come up with another way to potentially stay alive. So, I, I know that that's a concern, and I, we had some commentary from our restaurant owners here. I think it's a, I think it would be worthwhile for us to measure that as part of what we're doing. I know I asked earlier today, Sean, Shane, Sean, sorry, that, that we, that we understand what the metrics are, and we publicize those metrics, so that people know what we're going to be tracking, and this, this would be one, that, that proportionality of, did, did the number of restaurants go up, or did they go down, or did they stay pretty flat? And did, did some restaurants open a food truck, for example? I for one hope that, that, that Dino at, at Geopolis thinks about a food truck for euros, because I'm there, I'll be following that like a hawk, I'll tell you that. So thank, thank you for those comments, and I, I'm, I'm ready to, like, let's just do this, this is going to be great. I'm excited.
Councilmember Carter, and then Councilmember Coulter. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. And I guess I just wanted to make one comment to this part of the conversation. I definitely respect the concerns that we've heard. I also, in my mind, I'm like, the biggest competition to a restaurant owner is another restaurant, and we wouldn't be putting a moratorium on restaurants, right? Like, we want more restaurants in Bloomington, and so, to me, I, I've not really been able to wrap my head around that argument as much, and I'm curious around the measurement, because I don't totally know how we're going to know if a restaurant goes out of business, if it was because of a food truck, or if it was some other reason, the many reasons that restaurants go under. And so, I, I will leave it to the experts to figure out what that looks like, and what we're measuring, and what success looks like, but I for one am just super, super excited to get this, to vote on this ordinance, I will absolutely be supporting it. I want to thank staff for all of the input that you've gotten, and the patience that you've had during this process, and, I mean, we've heard over and over and over and over again from residents that they want these, they want food trucks in Bloomington, and so I am just hopeful that we deliver for them tonight, and, and couldn't be more excited to vote.
To be clear, it's not delivery. Thank you very much, and I'm here to keep your server as well. Councilmember Coulter?
And again, we don't have servers, because it's a food truck. No, I, I just wanted to echo the comments of, of my colleagues, this, I mean, this is something we have literally been talking about for years. this is something we have literally been talking about for years. And, you know, this is also one of those things, and, and this doesn't happen very often in this business. It, it, it just feels like one of those things that you just get asked about as a council member. You know, when are we going to get food trucks in Bloomington? That's, you know, that's one of those things I get stopped and, and asked about at the grocery store, and when I'm out, you know, with my family and doing things, and, and so on. So, I, you know, I, I think the concerns certainly that we've heard are, are understandable. I think, you know, as, as Councilmember DeSandro pointed out, the data, in addition to, I think, probably everyone's sort of anecdotal experience, don't necessarily bear that out. And I'm really excited to move forward with this. I think this is, is an exciting opportunity. I think it's a way to be innovative in the city of Bloomington. And it's just, just something that folks want. And, and at the end of the day, it, it feels really good to just deliver on something that I know folks want. So, if no one else has any comments, I'm ready to make a motion, Mayor.
And I'm ready to take them, some action on this.
Oh, now I got to find the thing. Mayor, I will move to adopt an ordinance amending chapters 10, 14, 19, 21, and Appendix A. It is similar to another one.
Oh, no, hold on, standby. That might be item 4.4 as well. Okay, okay.
I'm going to, I'm going to start from the beginning. Because I know the city attorney would want me to. I will move to adopt an ordinance amending, I'm, I'm going to make sure I get it right, chapters 10, 14, 19, 21, and Appendix A of the city code to create a new mobile food unit license and to establish standards for food trucks.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Coulter, second by Councilmember Carter, to make the necessary changes in the city code to create a new mobile food truck unit license and to establish standards for food trucks. Any further council discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Coulter?
And Mayor, I will move to adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of the ordinance attached to the staff report.
Second.
And a motion by Councilmember Coulter, second by Councilmember Carter for summary publication. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you to staff for your patience on all of this and for your work on all of this over the past three years. It's a, it was, as has been stated, this has been something that's been in the offing and people have been asking about, and I'm very glad we have it done. So, well done. Thank you very much. Move on to item 4.2. Again, Mr. James will be with us. This is a second public hearing. This is regarding our residential livability ordinance. Mr. James?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, council members. So this second item here, we've titled residential livability ordinance. However, it mostly pertains to standards around lighting, noise, and perimeter screening. And so, you know, with new uses, new technology, there's need to periodically review, update the code. And so tonight's ordinance primarily addresses, you know, known recurring issues associated with, you know, usually particular uses, but maybe more broadly, too. But especially where we have areas with industrial, commercial businesses, shown in gray on the map, that are near residential uses, shown in orange on that map. And so this went to a couple of study meetings in December last year. Planning Commission did recommend approval of tonight's ordinance, and so, again, asking to consider adopting the ordinance tonight. And so this first standard here, we'll talk about is with regard to motion lighting. And so the issue is really when we have interior lights that are shining through windows directly at residential overnight. Especially occurs when buildings are taller, but we've also heard complaints when they're lowered to the ground also. So this is, you know, example, most recent, the issue has occurred with self-storage, and this example is picture is shown elsewhere, or from elsewhere, but same idea. And so we're proposing, very similar to conditions required, we've required of self-storage facilities, that, you know, where this type of thing happens, that those lights be motion-activated after hours. And so it does have pretty limited applicability. It only applies to interior lights. The building would have to be unoccupied. And it only applies when those light, lights are visible to nearby residential, you know, within 250 feet. Also, only applies to new development. So, you know, we've already attached conditions to where this has been an issue with self-storage. So we're saying, you know, new development, now this would apply. So the next standard in the ordinance is with regard to perimeter screening. And, you know, the issue I've called here is that we've got a one-way standard. We require perimeter screening of industrial and commercial uses when they're near residential. But we don't require screening when, say, we get new residential development that goes in next to the businesses. And so, you know, the, the standard is proposing that, well, when we do get new residential development, that that development provides screening if none exists, and if it would otherwise be required of the industrial or commercial business. So, this came up most recently at that Lindell Flats site. The Dairy Queen had a minor expansion of its trash room to the west side of the building. Lindell Flats had just been approved, and so Dairy Queen had to provide a fence along the south edge of its property line there. And that, that fence wouldn't have been required if Lindell Flats wasn't there. So, you know, on one end, it, it benefits those business owners, because, you know, they wouldn't need to provide fencing then if it's there. On the other hand, you know, it's also a benefit to new residents coming in, because that fencing wouldn't be there otherwise. There's no requirement for it unless, say, one of these businesses was to expand. So, it's kind of double-sided benefit there. And then the next standard is with regard to noise. So we heard about this most recently with regard to data centers and, you know, noise impacts from that type of use. But it has been broad, different uses throughout the city where we've learned of noise impacts. And so, you know, that's part of the issue. The other issue is that the city has limited authority through statute to set, you know, noise level requirements more stricter than the state. And so as part of, you know, staff's research this past year, we looked at past complaints, not just with data centers, and have identified that, you know, where there are issues, it's most commonly associated with outdoor mechanical equipment. So, like pictured here, where we have air handling units or generators outside. You know, it's, usually there's screening, but can still create nuisance. And so the standard's then saying, well, whenever the city requires a noise impact statement, then the consultant preparing that statement identify where on the site that equipment could be located in a manner that's least impactful to residential. And that's also meets our code requirements. And then, you know, wherever that location is, equipment has to be located there. And then we do, you know, give the applicant an ability to provide an analysis of alternatives if they would like to locate it elsewhere. And I'll talk more about that the next slide here. So that alternatives analysis, in this case, you know, I'm using Verizon as an example. The proposed expansion that was approved is on the north side there. And say if this standard wasn't placed, they would have, you know, if, with the noise impact statement, it most likely would have identified the least impactful location as perhaps that southeast corner of the site, you know, further away from residential. And so if the applicant wanted the expansion where it was proposed and approved here, they would have had to answer these questions. And then, you know, the, the city would decide then, is the analysis thorough enough? Is it doing enough to, to mitigate impacts and address concerns? And so, you know, this, the state statute is more about, you know, requiring certain decibels at, at property lines, or is the standard is more location-based? And I do want to address this because it's come up. We did, we're intentional about not defining data centers as part of this ordinance for a few reasons. So, one, they're difficult to define. I attached an example of Burnsville's definition here and underlined a few keywords. And, you know, frankly, most office business uses today probably have some form of data center at their location. You know, it essentially means a room or building that houses computer and network equipment. And so you think about it, a lot of businesses have some form of data center. Certainly some are larger than others, and other cities elsewhere in the country have applied standards where data centers are, say, over, say, 10,000 square feet. However, that number can get a little bit arbitrary to define. And then, you know, the impact is really about how intense that use, how intense that space is used. And so like if a small space is packed full of computer equipment, there's that much more outdoor mechanical equipment associated to help cool down that facility. And it, it's really more about the intensity of use that's creating the impact. And, you know, frankly, all of the data centers are associated with those generators and air handling units. So, we decided to address just that mechanical equipment, finding that it, you know, more broadly addressed the issues here. Did want to add, too, that where we do have some data centers, they're in industrial districts, and there are, you know, potentially more impactful uses in those areas, such as manufacturing, which is a permitted use there. So, staff didn't feel like it was appropriate to single out data centers in this case. The next slide was with regard to conditional use permits. So, because there was discussion about, well, requiring a conditional use permit of data centers near residential. And there's certainly pros to that approach. You know, we can add ongoing development conditions. There's potential for expanded public engagement. You know, mailing would have to go out, and there would be public hearings. But that does add time to the process. And, you know, the discretion can be limited, too. You know, it creates a little bit false expectation about the city's ability to, say, enforce those standards, or even to deny a CUP. So we can't deny a CUP only based off of, you know, negative feedback from neighbors. So there's that limitation. Now, I did substantial outreach with, primarily with the residents that lived around that Verizon site that provided feedback in the past. And reached out to businesses, developers as well. Relied a fair amount on past comments from public hearings. And then, you know, notice of this meeting, as well as the other ordinances, are provided in the webpage. He-subscribed notice went out. And then in the sun current as well. And so with that, you know, Planning Commission and staff do recommend adoption, as well as the summary publication.
Thank you, Mr. James. Council questions? Councilmember Loman?
I just have one, one, one real question. In terms of the exterior lighting, if we compare that to what we did with the storage units, what's, what was the footage on that with exterior lighting? Do you remember?
Mayor, Councilmember Loman. We required the motion lighting of those self-storage facilities. One is, you know, within 150 feet of nearby residential. The other is, I think, a similar distance, maybe a little bit further away. However, that, those were applied, you know, as conditions kind of case by case.
Good. Because that's when I was, you know, I was looking at that, I was like, huh, this seems different than what we did with that. And I was trying to figure out why the difference here, if I, if my memory is correct. And what, you might not have it in front of you, but that, that was confusing to me in terms of, we'd have the one standard, you know, for that, and then for this. So I thought, because I thought that we, you know, I, I thought Councilmember Nelson was the one pushing for us to do it for everything. And then, so I, that's why I'm trying to keep that straight in my mind.
Councilmember Loman, too, let me add a little bit more to the, so those conditions that were required of particular uses, I don't think they had a specific, like, distance associated with them. We already knew, you know, where that building was proposed and where the existing residential is. But we did, you know, adopt new standards for self-storage facilities. And so you might be remembering that we required self-storage to be 500 feet away from.
Yeah, there you go. That's what I'm trying to figure out. So we got 500 feet, so we got 500 feet there, but 250 here.
Right.
Isn't that, isn't that the same, like, lighting? You know, help me understand what the difference is, because I, I'm not understanding why 250 here and then 500 there.
Councilmember Loman, so the, the 500 feet is a, a standard just for self-storage facilities. The 250 feet would apply to any type of use. And then, you know, we felt like the 250 adequately captured all of adjacent properties, as well as those across the street. Whereas 500 feet away from the existing building tended to capture properties beyond those adjacent.
So as long as I'm not a storage place, I can have the same type of lighting next to a residential area. It, it, that's, and that's the way I'm understanding. Is that, am I, am I wrong? Help me if I, if I, if I'm saying this wrong. Because the way I'm, way I'm reading this is, as long as I'm not a storage facility, I can have the exact same lighting that they have right next door and impact the residential area, which is something I don't want to do.
So the storage facility requirement, it's a building setback. So those buildings have to be 500 feet from residential. Whereas this standard is saying, well, businesses within 250 feet of residential are subject to this lighting requirement. So, they're different standards.
I'm not following.
No, I, I think I understand the, the difference there. It's, it's a distinction, certainly, but there, I mean, there's a difference here as well, so. Council, additional questions here? Councilmember DeSandro?
Just a quick follow-up on that, Sean, thank you. Yeah, so I had the same kind of questioning. So, I guess to, to, to cover off on that, so we, I, I sent you an actual picture of, like, the U-Haul storage facility on Lindell Avenue. Not making this up, folks, at 8:40 at night, it's like Times Square over there. It's crazy. And, and I don't understand, like, I don't think I understood why. So which of the ordinance changes are going to turn those lights off? That's what I'm trying to figure out. Is it going to be the, the new standard that we're going to try to pass tonight that's going to get these folks to actually do motion lighting in these interior storage facilities? Or is it the storage stuff that already happened? And are they not in compliance, I guess, is the question? Because at 8:40, well, knowing, we'll have the conversation about it being at 10 o'clock as opposed to 8:40. I get that part. But this was in a, you know, on a Sunday, and there wasn't anybody in the parking lot, and yet everything was lit up like a Christmas tree. So I'm just kind of curious. What, what are you trying to, you know, what are we going to see as an example here? Might this change as a result of this ordinance?
Okay, so, thanks, Mayor, Councilmember DeSandro. So I apologize, first of all, because my response probably didn't make a lot of sense in your previous email. I had only seen a cropped portion of the image and not the full one until later. So, thanks for the opportunity to respond now. And so, you know, what would this ordinance do with regard to Lindell Avenue? It would require, you know, as shown here, I've got an example now where that self-storage's facility is on Lindell Avenue. And so it is within that 250 feet from the nearby multifamily building there. And so that building would be required to provide motion lighting. However, it is already through condition of approval, needs the motion lighting. And so, and the standard only applies to new uses. But, you know, the intent is that those lights be motion-activated after 10:00 PM.
Okay. And then, on the, in, so, okay, I, I don't have any other questions. I had a comment, and I'll save it for after public hearing. Thank you.
Perfect. Councilmember Carter? Did I see your hand go up? No? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions to clarify a few things here. The two-way screening, my understanding is it only applies to multifamily, wouldn't apply to single-family, but it says it's for new. What would happen if a multifamily project was expanded? I mean, we've approved a few of those, Friendship Village, and although I don't know that it's near industrial, but anyways, things, things get busy, bigger, they remodel, things like that. Is there a trigger? Is there a trigger at those types of events in this ordinance?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson. So, there are certain triggers for non-conformities in the code, one of which is expansion beyond a certain size. I don't remember that exact square footage.
Okay. So, if they did a major expansion, it might possibly bring that into play?
Correct.
Okay. And then, in terms of the noise stuff, you're proposing that we do least impactful. Can you help me understand how that is still compliant with state law? Because we had the issue at Verizon, and we're told that as long as it meets state noise ordinance, we're, have very limited discretion in terms of what to do. So, if Verizon came and had a report that said the southeast corner is the least impactful, but we're putting it here, and it meets state law, and you are specifically preempted by state law from doing anything more stringent, how is this getting us around that?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, Councilmember Nelson. So, state law specifies that you can't set the decibel levels lower than what they've required, whereas this standard is requiring, it's a location-based standard. So, we're saying, you know, place equipment where it's least impactful, you know, that's at the judgment of the consultant.
Okay. Okay. And then, and I assume that's gone through legal, and legal agrees with that? I'm sorry, I put the city attorney asleep. Bad habit of mine. We're all, we've all had that. I just wanted, city attorneys, your, your team has looked at that question and agrees that this is consistent with state law, we're not preempted, this isn't some workaround that they'd come in and challenge?
I'm confident that this ordinance has been reviewed through our legal department like the, like we always do, so I'm comfortable.
Okay, great. And then, you had had some specific commentary on the use of a data center and not being able to do that. During that, you mentioned that the issue seems to be the mechanical equipment that is outside to cool the computers, and in my mind, while you were talking, you seemed to define data center for me, because that seems to be what the issue is, is anything that has enough computers that you have to have mechanical cooling systems to deal with that. And so, I just, and maybe I'm wrong, but that seems to be, like, a way to go about setting up a use that we could put into our code. I agree with you. Burnsville's seems really broad and probably applies to every business. I'm pretty sure I have an air conditioner at my office and a battery backup for my computer, and I really don't have a data center. I really doubt it. So, I, I just think that's one of the things we had talked about as a council, that we really wanted to take a look at and being able to do, because it was one of the key things in there. But I'm just more, is there a way to regulate that type of equipment? If that's the highest complaints, those types of things, I like what you're doing with the best place to put it, but I'm just wondering if there's another way to create some way of categorizing that as a use, and then looking at our zoning map about where that makes sense, or creating setbacks similar to what we did with the, the use of storage because of the lighting concerns. There seems to be something, any facility that needs that type of equipment seems to be an issue that I, that I'd like to get a little bit meatier solution to.
Yeah, Mayor, thanks, Councilmember Nelson. I did want to add, too, staff was concerned that, say, by defining data centers, it might inadvertently lump some of our existing uses into those definition standards and, you know, make the, you know, subject them to standards, whereas today, they might not create a nuisance. So, that was a concern, too, in defining data centers. I do agree, so, yeah, they're typically associated with outdoor equipment. I guess the question is, now, how much equipment then is impactful? Is it three, four air handling units? It's tough to define, and it largely depends on how much noise is generated, but then that butts into the, the statute limits.
Council, additional questions? Comments on this? If not, thank you. Don't go far. This is a public hearing, and I will open the public hearing right now on item 4.2, which is our residential livability ordinance. Is there anyone in the council chambers who wishes to speak to item 4.2 this evening? Want to see anyone coming forward in the chambers? Leia, do we have anyone on the line who wishes to speak to item 4.2 tonight?
If anyone wishes to speak on the item 4.2, please press star one on your telephone keypad. Once again, please press star one on your telephone keypad. We have Ms. Linda Fletcher. Ma'am, your line is open.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening, welcome.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for taking the time to hear me. I, I hope that all of you received a, an email this afternoon with my comments and suggestions on them. I'm, did you, do, did you receive one of those, Mayor Bussie?
I can, I can answer that. I did indeed receive your email, and
Okay, so
And I've seen nodding heads here on the council dais as well.
Okay, good, good. Well, I'm going to basically repeat that. I am glad to see that there are some questions, which were my questions, too, and I will just go over this and hope that you will consider them seriously. I'm concerned about, as you know, I'm addressing the proposed section 21.301.12, small E in parentheses, and then small two, or two in parentheses. And this is where there is mention of a noise impact statement, which is off, which is section 10.29.04. I feel there should be an addition as to what will trigger an NIS. And in substance, I think it should be something to do with complaints and concerns from nearby residents. I would like to see that in writing in some way, and in, with text, you know, in words, not just included in the but-not-limited-to verbiage of section 10.29.04. I feel that a lot of this about the noise ordinance has come up because of the residents' reaction to what's going on at Verizon. You know, we're the ones who perhaps got it on, got it on the drawing board, and I think we should be, I think residents should be specified in writing. I also have something to add about who would be, who would choose the business. If an NIS is triggered, who is going to choose the company to prepare it, and who's going to pay for it? You can see that, in my view, I think the city should choose the business, and the applicant should pay for it. I think that would be a fairer way of getting a clearer idea of what, what, what this NIS should include. As was noted before, the, and I think that we, already, this has been done by the staff, you can see that the most vulnerable locations are on the borders of residentially zoned areas and industrial areas. And there is a map of, it exists, and, which is good, about these, identifying these areas in Bloomington. I think that it might be, I don't know about this as much as you all do, but why couldn't a cup, a, a conditional use permit be put in with some of these areas to, it might be helpful in these situations to have a little more standards where these things run up against each other? I also am in favor of a data center being defined. I feel if it's not defined, does it exist? Well, it certainly exists because we're using the term all the time here, and having no definition is just really too vague and leaves, leaves nearby residents at a distinct disadvantage. I don't feel the ordinance as proposed is strong enough. There are no teeth in it. What good is it if there are no teeth in it? Will refining and improving the ordinance be difficult? I think most probably so, but that is the work you all were elected to do. The health and welfare of Bloomington residents is your primary responsibility, and ordinances exist to do just that. This one does not. If, for example, data centers are difficult to categorize, they are not impossible to do, so start categorizing them. The residential areas surrounding the Verizon data centers have already lost. We lost a year and a half ago. We lost before it began, as we had no legal enforceable protection, and it could happen again. Adjoining the Verizon property at 10951 Bush Lake Road is an empty building owned by a company known as Caton. The building has been vacant for at least six years. It is another data center waiting to happen. Under the present and proposed rules, it is Verizon all over again. Please take this opportunity to go back to the drawing board and help residents now before we have this story again. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you for comments, Ms. Fletcher. Appreciate it. Leia, is there
And we don't have anyone on the phone line, Mr. Mayor. We don't have anyone on the phone line. You may continue.
Thank you. Last call for anyone here in the council chambers? Anyone wishing to speak to item 4.2? No one coming forward? Counsel, I look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.2.
So moved.
Second?
Counsel, second by, or, motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Alessandro to close the public hearing on item 4.2. Hearing no further, council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. So, some of the questions brought up by Ms. Fletcher, I, the, the notion of residential complaints or, or neighborhood complaints leading to a noise impact statement, I, I think I would look to our, our legal team, is that, is that legal and enforceable? I mean, is that even doable to base an inspection like that based on neighborhood complaints? I, I mean, we do it, we do, you know, neighborhood complaints can lead to inspections or, or actions based on if there's litter in the yard, or junk cars, or that kind of thing. Is it, is it one for one? Is it comparable in, in this situation as well?
Mayor members, you know, we, we enforce our city code based on both proactive enforcement as well as complaint-based, and so, it's possible that we could follow up on a complaint. Again, there are regulations about, in the law, about the complainant. We would also need to, you know, look at staff impacts, but, you know, we often follow up on complaints that come in from the community members on all different kinds of things out in the city. So, I'd certainly be open to the opinions of Ms. Moore, who's here, as well as the planner, Sean, about their opinions on it as well. But, you know, it seems to me like it would be within the realm of possibilities.
Thank you, Ms. Manderscheid. Either of you have anything to add, or thoughts on the, on the matter?
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, council, environmental health enforces the noise code, and if, you know, we take in complaints, if there was a site where planning said, hey, environmental health, do you have complaints at this site? Have you talked to residents? What have you found? Have you taken any measurements out there? I think by having residents bring issues to our attention at the city gives us the opportunity to find out more what's going on, which we might not know, that can, you know, enhance our ability to take a closer look and, you know, think things through. So, I, I think it could definitely come into play where residents who voice, you know, what they're experiencing, which, you know, might be happening at night, which we don't know about, could definitely lead to a noise impact statement being required. So, I, I agree with Melissa Manderscheid.
So, and, and in your opinion, does this need to be specified, or is this already taking place?
I, I think for the most part, I, you know, it's not a frequent occurrence where this comes up. So, I, I, you know, we, we take complaints on various things, and, and a lot of times, policy changes start with resident complaints, or this, like, I think a noise impact statement would also start that way, or could start that way.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, the only thing I would add to that, I totally agree with everything that Ms. Moore said, the only thing is, you know, if we are seeing a whole bunch of these, or they're concentrated in a specific area, typically, that's a sign that there's a bigger problem, that we would do a deep dive into, you know, based on the nature of the complaint, and, you know, be reaching out to the property owner and all the rest. So, it seems like the current system is working for now, or the current proposed system would work for now, and, you know, we can certainly revisit it like we always do.
Understood. Question also about the, if, if there is a noise impact statement necessary, who prepares it and who pays for it? And I'm assuming, yes, the city would choose the business, or choose who's doing the impact statement. The notion of the impact, or the applicant paying for it, I'm, I'm confused by this specifically, so I'm, I'm not sure if that, if that means the applicant, the person asking for it, or the applicant, the, the business applicant? Because, I, I mean, here's my concern, basically, neighbors don't like somebody, and so they all complain, and they make them pay for this expensive noise impact statement, right? I mean, that's, that's the danger I think we run here, right?
Yeah, so, I can clarify, too, Mr. Mayor, so the applicant does pay for the noise impact statement, the city does not.
Okay.
But, yeah, that was a concern from planning staff, was that, well, if we, if we do spell out that complaints lead to noise impact statements, then we might have a lot of them.
Mm-hmm. Oh, understood.
So, Mayor, mirror on that one. I just wanted to make one, one little bit of clarification. I think what the respondent was saying was, what she wanted to have done was the city pick who that, and that, that I was curious about, can the city interject in that, that role and pick who that, that person who does that noise piece? That, that's the way I understood it.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor, Councilmember Loman. So, you know, that is a possibility. We do something similar for, like, traffic studies or parking analysis. I don't know what the pool of consultants is like out there to provide those noise studies, if we get very many that would provide this service for the city. It's something extra.
Understood. Okay. And then, there, there was a question also, a point about needing a, a, a map identifying the borders of residentially zoned areas, industrial zones. I thought we had done that. Hadn't, hadn't we put that map together last time we talked about this?
So, yeah, it's been included in the presentation. I don't remember if it's in the staff report, but, yeah, it's included with the item.
Okay. And then, the, I suppose the largest issue brought forward is this whole definition of a data center, back to Councilmember Nelson's question. If there is not a industry standard of what a data center is, and to be able to define it, is it, is it, is that what, first of all, would that fall to the realm of what a city is able to do? And then, if it is identified, does it stand up in court? Especially if there's a, a specific ordinance targeting what a data center might be? I mean, that's, and I know I'm looking at you, I should be looking at the, the attorney, and I'm not sure that the attorney would have a, an answer for me here as well, but I think that's the question that we need to think about and consider in this. Councilmember Alessandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, I'm confused by this on a, a couple of grounds, and maybe, maybe it's just because I don't have the experience from, so, so when Ms. Fletcher mentioned that the residents already lost a year and a half ago, what did they bring forward, and what did we say no to? Or what, like, what happened there that, that they feel like they lost? And if it is related to data center, I have some comments on that specifically, but I didn't know what the background was there.
Do you want to take it on, or should I?
Apologies for making you revisit something painful there, Mr. Mayor.
The Reader's Digest version here, it was, it, there was an expansion of the Verizon area over there, the, the industrial area that they have, and part of the expansion included a data center which then precipitated outdoor cooling systems, so fans, basically, that cycle on and cycle off, and that are tested on a regular basis, and that became a noise issue for, for the neighborhood, understandably. I mean, noise, as we talked about, is, is pervasive, and it's, and it's I mean, noise, as we talked about, is pervasive and it's constant. The neighbors came to the city council looking for remedy. We were only able to do so much because by measuring the decibels of the noise, which is how you measure whether or not it's beyond a level that's acceptable or not, that level is set by the state. And nothing that the city can do, the city cannot do anything to change those decibel levels. The city can't say, nope, the state, it's not 15, it needs to be 10, because in this area, it's too close to residential areas. So there was, there was a limited amount of relief that we could give the neighborhood. I mean, disappointingly, but there was a limited amount of relief. We did talk about the need to go to our legislative delegation. We need legislative remedy, and I think it's part of our legislative priorities this year. But beyond that, we weren't able to imply any or impose anything stricter or more restrictive than what the state allowed us to do.
Okay. Appreciate the context there. I mean, it, you know, I just pulled up the, I don't suppose there's any kind of sound wall or anything on Bush Lake on that side, on the west, on the east side of Bush Lake that would help it all there, because I'm looking at the map and it, I mean, Ms. Fletcher, she lives on Highland Road, like she mentioned, is literally more than three blocks away from that facility, which is also set back 250 feet. So if she's hearing that in her, I mean, that's pretty loud, right? Even if it doesn't hit the decibels. So I just wanted to make sure I had that context. So data centers do have a rule, like they have a definition. I mean, any, if I was searching for a data center, I can promise you, they would tell me exactly what all their features and functionality are. I mean, their job is very specific, right? Which is to consolidate equipment, both telecommunications equipment and IT equipment for the purposes of running big operations, right? And I agree with the respondent that we, you know, these are going to get more, I mean, you know, soon as somebody here decides to open up something crypto-related, we're going to be in this, you know, business again. So I think it does warrant us looking at what we can do here. But I think that there are definitions out there that would help us qualify. And I agree with the specific, you know, statement that like, hey, if I have a closet and it has, you know, six, it has a rack of six servers and it technically got a data center, well, that's not what we're talking about, right? I promise you, data centers are the kind that is probably there at Verizon and is probably making this noise, have very specific fire suppression equipment standards. They have very specific cooling equipment standards. Like you go into them and they are 40 degrees because the computers have to be, you know, so we're talking extreme energy utilization here. And that's something we don't, we're not talking about in any of this ordinance, and I asked some questions about it. As we think about going into next year and we talk about environmental health as a strategic priority, I would like us to take a lens of environmental health to some of these ordinance changes that we make. You know, I asked questions about, for example, native plantings as part of landscaping as opposed to just, any evergreen tree will do, like, that's cool. You know, like, let's just work on that. And this is another great example. The energy utilization in a data center is extreme and constant. And that's very different than, I'm running a small business, you know, right across the street here in one of our centers and I have three servers running and sure, that room is 10 degrees cooler than the other room, but we're not talking about anything extreme here. You know, we can define that, and I think if we really do need to, we can and be proactive about it. And maybe we'd over, you know, kind of to your point, Sean, about like, it may be bigger, you know, 5,000 square feet or 10,000 square feet. But there are very specific combinations of requirements from an electrical perspective, a fire suppression perspective and things like that, that in combination, I think, could qualify a data center and make it really easy for us to make a rule around it. My personal opinion, just based on being in that business.
And appreciate the opinion and the perspective. Councilmember Loman?
Well, Mayor, you had asked us earlier to, you know, look at the time and that kind of thing. You know, as I look at this here, and it's not a comment about anything, I think these are all important conversations that we're having, but I'm starting to wonder that if we need to either carve some of this out, you know, lay this aside for a little while, you know, I'm just not sure if we're ready on this, because I've got some other questions about this, you know, hearing, conversation about this. And I do think we need to do something around this, you know, this noise piece. And I do have some questions about the lighting piece as well. So, I mean, I hate to have us redo this all over again, but I just wonder, are we going to get to a conclusion tonight? And we've got a couple of items, well, four more items at least on the agenda. So I just want to throw that back to you, Mayor, you know, just see what you think.
Well, and it's a worthwhile question, I think. And I wonder if, Mr. James, to Councilmember DeLisandro's point, as you looked into the world of data centers, I mean, is there, are there industry standards that don't necessarily wrap in other things that are very specific and that are frankly not gamable? So, you know, if we define a data center, then somebody comes in and turns a quarter turn and all of a sudden they're not a data center again, because we've defined it specifically, what we will and will not allow, and they do this and they, you know, so I'm, I would turn to the staff members who have worked on this and looked at this. Is that, is that definition doable?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I certainly think it's possible. I think it does have to do with size and scale of them and, you know, depending on how we, you know, define them and define them so, say, uses like Verizon fit that definition, but other uses that don't create those nuisances don't fit that definition, they might be a tricky balance, but it's a possibility. One suggestion staff would have is, you know, tonight's ordinance doesn't preclude creating standards for data centers, so it is possible to move forward with tonight's ordinance and consider those data center standards at a later date.
So I'd look to the council. I mean, are there enough questions that we do want to lay this over, say, this isn't quite done yet? We'd like to see more work done on this. Or do we move forward with it with the understanding that there's, we can do additional work specifically on the question of data centers? Councilmember Loman?
You know, Mayor, I'm happy to move this forward. I think that, I think even the other questions that I have, I think we can work with staff. We could always bring it back again and look at it later, but I think that, I think the heart of what we're trying to do is here. But I'm happy to move this forward and then have it come back at some other point to look at those data centers, maybe look at one of those light standards pieces and some of the other items that we may have.
And do others have thoughts on this? Councilmember DeLisandro, I mean, you're comfortable?
No, Mr. Mayor, I'm fine with that, but I think, kind of in the same way we've talked a little bit about like active transportation plan and other things, this is just one of those evolving areas. And I think it's worthy of a conversation on multiple grounds, right? Not just, not just the nuisance issue, of course, important one, but, you know, where in our zoning code is that a permitted use? You know, we can go through a lot of ways to kind of contain the spaces where these things might occur. And then, of course, the, you know, there's the environmental, you know, electrical impacts and other things like that to consider too. So it might be worthy of a more comprehensive, you know, look at in any way.
Understood. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm comfortable with that approach that Mr. James has proposed and moving this forward with two caveats. One, that we understand what we're going to come back and hear back and when, at least in a general timeframe. I don't need a date specific, but just, is this in the next month? Is this in the next six months? When would that happen? And specifically, I think Councilmember Loman had talked about the lighting standards. Why is that different than other places? And I think we've had discussion about the data center use and things like that, so.
Mr. Markergard, good evening.
Sure. Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Nelson. I would say we could easily come back within the next six months if that would work out for the council.
If everybody's comfortable with that, I want to make sure, because, yes, there are some questions on this, and I know whether it's lighting or noise or some other issues, there were some things that had come up. So, but if we're comfortable, understanding that we can continue to work with staff and this is the framework and that we work within that framework to add some specifics, if everybody's comfortable with that, let's-
And that's what I would move, Mayor, that the two points that Councilmember Nelson made succinctly would be just added to that or just understood, that those are the items of the what and the when, that I'd be happy to go ahead and just go ahead and move to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 21 of the city code to establish standards for motion activated lighting in non-residential structures, locations, requirements of outdoor mechanical equipment and perimeters, screening amendments.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Nelson, to adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 21 of the city code. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Councilmember Loman?
Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of the ordinance attached to the staff report.
Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Nelson for summary publication. No further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. So we do this as we discussed here with the understanding that we're directing staff also to continue to move forward, to refine this and to come back with more specifics on all of the issues, both in the, probably in the lighting and then in the outdoor mechanical standards, especially around sound, and ideally within the next six months. All right? Very good. Thank you. Item 4.3, our third public hearing, this is on the rental housing code amendments. Ms. Moore?
Good evening. Could I have the slides, please? So the city has inspected rental housing for over 60 years, and the main reason is the same now as when the program began, to protect the health, safety and welfare of residents living in rental housing. Regular inspections also ensures upkeep and maintenance, which in turn maintains property value and the value of neighboring properties. Here is our overview for my presentation and just want to, you know, kind of show you where I'm going tonight, so, next slide. So what this, these amendments do firstly is adopt the International Property Maintenance Code, the current version available, which is the 2021. Currently in code, we adopt the 2012 version, but there's not a lot of difference. So every three years, a new code comes along. It's a model code. We use it for rental housing in existing buildings. The 21 version has some expanded detail on fire prevention or protection systems, smoke alarms, carbon monoxide detectors and such, very similar to our state fire code. So overall, updating this current, to the current code, has little effect and really does do a good job of reflecting what we're doing. Next slide. We need to update some definitions in our housing code because some statutes have changed. Recent, so last summer, Minnesota statute 144D became 144G and kind of some of the lingo around group housing changes changed. We went from housing with service establishments to now assisted living facilities. So that's a change we need to make because of statutory changes. The definitions of family and functional household are also, we feel no longer needed with the proposed updates in occupancy standards that we're making with this code. Let's see. And then also group housing, we need to update that definition just to reflect the changes once again in statute where the Minnesota Department of Health formerly registered housing with services, now they license assisted living facilities. And also then add those group homes licensed by the Department of Human Services so that we kind of encompass all group housing into the same definition. Also proposed is using the simpler International Property Maintenance Code definition of a dwelling unit and adding the residential care facility definition from the city's zoning code, just to be a little more consistent. Next slide, please. So under current code, group homes registered under Minnesota statute, Chapter 144D, needed a rental license. But that statute was replaced with the new Chapter 144G back in August, where the Minnesota Department moved from registering group homes to now licensing them. So in our current code, we license those Department of Health, once registered, now licensed group homes. So with that, we are proposing that all group homes, even including those licensed by the Department of Human Services, are also licensed as rental housing. We say that now with the new standards changed with the Department of Health, they're very, in many ways, similar to those that have been in existence with the Department of Human Services, that our group homes are virtually quite difficult to tell the difference between one licensed by, you know, one state department or another. But the one thing that's consistent is the folks that live in group homes are all tenants. So we feel that applying the standard consistently across all group homes will benefit our residents that do live in them. And, next slide. Some proposed changes in licensing and reinspection fees. So currently, licensing procedures are that owner or owner's agent applies for the license, pays the first year's license fee, then a pre-licensing inspection is conducted by the Environmental Health Housing Inspector. If no hazards are found, the license is issued and the tenants move in. Sometimes owners apply for a license but don't pass that initial inspection despite having the city's checklist to prepare for it. After making repairs to correct violations cited, they need a follow-up or a second pre-licensing inspection. Some property owners wait months to schedule or never schedule that follow-up inspection. And this code change would basically limit this timeframe from when you apply to when you get through the inspections and get that license issued to 60 days. Most people can readily do that, or they can come in and talk to us and say, okay, I'm interested in a rental license. We can say, well, these are the things you need to do and how it works, and, you know, this is how we can quickly get you a rental license and get tenants moved in. But we have had trouble with some just dragging the license out forever or moving tenants in and we didn't know they moved tenants in. And we're just trying to get kind of a shorter timeframe on that license application and initial licensing period. And in the proposed code, we would state that after that 60 days, since the initial license was applied for, the fee would then be forfeited. Our current license for a house is $126 for a license fee. So it's not a great quantity, but it is that, you know, first year's license fee. They would then be able to reapply if that came up again. The second change is applying a $100 reinspection fee to the annual license to those landlords who don't cancel the scheduled routine annual inspection and no one meets the inspector at the scheduled time. We've really been trying to crack down on this issue, but we feel that having this incentive of reinspection fee applied to the license might help us or at least be able to warn that we're going to do this and people that frequently, you know, kind of leave us hanging at the door, so to say, that, you know, that kind of limits that type of behavior. So, next slide, please. Currently, the city code requires that a maximum of four unrelated individuals are allowed per dwelling unit in combination with the International Property Maintenance Code's occupancy limits based on square footage of your bedroom, living room and dining room space. These amendments would eliminate that the four unrelated maximum and base occupancy only on the International Property Maintenance Code square footage alone, meaning a larger home with more bedrooms and space could have more tenants. So it's pretty straightforward. Next slide. And I just want to give you an example of this, a quick example of almost 1,000 square foot unit with two bedrooms. First glance, you say, oh, two bedrooms, four people, right? Under the International Property Maintenance Code, you need at least 70 square foot bedroom space for a person. You need 50 square footage of, per person with two or more folks. Living room and dining room space for three to five people, need about 200- Living room and dining room space, um, for three to five people, need about two hundred square feet. So, let's do the numbers, next slide. So, apartment building managers are very used to making these type of calculations, but a lot of our, uh, rental homes may not be because they've been relying on that maximum of four unrelated folks or a family. So, here's how we would calculate this. So, and this is a real apartment in, in Bloomington, so if you measure the, each of the bedrooms and, uh, divide their total square footage by fifty feet, you could see that actually three people could legally, um, have, be in these bedrooms for six people. But, when you look at the living and dining room space, um, and you have to subtract out the hallway, the utility room and three feet in front of the kitchen and cabinets, these are not considered habitable spaces. You come up with a number that's between two hundred and two hundred and fifty square feet. So, this unit could have an, an occupancy of five person. Five folks, but not six, because you'd need two hundred and fifty square feet of living and dining space to accommodate six people. So, it's just kind of, we just rely on square footage, bigger houses could have more people. Next slide. The last proposed change is to delete the crime pre- crime-free provisions, including requiring landlords to do a criminal history check on prospective tenants and include, and included disorderly behavior and nuisance condition addendum as part of the written lease. Landlords may choose to continue conducting criminal background checks, but the city code would no longer require it. Also proposed is deleting from city code the rental license revocation procedures for renting to tenants with, can, uh, tenants convicted of three disorderly behavior or nuisance conduct conditions within twenty-four months. While these provisions have never been used by the city, repealing these crime-free provisions were a priority of both the Racial Equity Strategic Planning Committee and the Community Development Department's Racial Equity Action Team. So, these are just things that, um, we wrote, we thought we needed back in two thousand fourteen, but over time, we never used them and now we're kind of embarrassed to say we have them in our code. So, I think it's, you know, time that, um, we update our code and kinda do a little housekeeping. Uh, next slide. So, outreach and engagement. To gather input on these proposed amendments, we mailed postcards to all rental licensees and state licensed group homes, um, that don't have a city rental license. The postcards summarized the proposed changes, directed folks to the rental housing webpage where the proposed amendments were posted, and explained how to comment and ask questions. Eight licensees contacted me regarding the post, proposed changes. Most asked questions to better understand what was being changed and in the end, you know, after answering those questions, they, they thanked us for contacting them. Um, the, there's a summary included of comments and questions received from, um, from those eight licensees. Similar information was also sent, uh, to HomeLine, the Minnesota Multi-Housing Association, and members of the Bloomington Housing Action Team in an email with proposed code changes attached, asking for their feedback. Both the Minnesota Multi-Housing Association and HomeLine responded, um, and two suggestions from HomeLine were actually incorporated into the proposed amendments. And then even today, Eric Haugie, um, from HomeLine, um, left a voicemail message for council, uh, late this afternoon, supporting, you know, our update of the code, especially repeal the crime-free provisions. Um, and then wanted to thank council and staff for asking HomeLine to, uh, provide input on the draft amendments and, you know, this is something that we did back in two thousand fourteen also. So we do have a pretty good relationship with HomeLine and the Minnesota Multi-Housing Association, so both, um, uh, expressed their support for what we're proposing in these amendments to me. Next slide. So, you know, why, why are we doing this? I, I think that sometimes when we think about tenants, we don't necessarily always think of them maybe as residents like homeowners and, you know, complaints come in and things, but, um, a large portion of the people who live in Bloomington do rent. And, um, a lot of, uh, the folks that rent and especially, um, buy a higher rate are black, indigenous and people of color residents who have a significantly higher rate of living in rental housing than white residents. The largest difference especially is seen when comparing the rental rate of black or African-American residents at eighty percent compared to white residents' rental rate at twenty-five percent. So there's, there's a large difference and so when we make changes to the rental ordinance, we really are impacting, um, our residents, our BIPOC residents in the city. Next slide, please. So, in considering, uh, a racial equity impact assessment, um, these amendments, again, are being used to pilot this tool, the racial equity impact assessment. And the findings indicate no adverse impacts or an unintended consequence to racial or ethnic groups. Repeal the crime-free provisions was speci- was a specific priority of the Racial Equity Strategic Planning Committee. Actually, I was at a meeting with Faith and I saw the list and I'm like, oh, I know where that is in code, I think we can get rid of that, cause I don't think it's being used from the police department. She's like, really? I'm like, yeah, it's, I, I helped write it. I, you know, we, nobody uses it and I, I just don't think it fits anymore, um, with the city's priorities. These changes were also, um, a community development department racial equity policy priority project, especially in the leading of the family definition, because historically LGBTQ families have been excluded from the narrow definition in, you know, many local, state and federal policies, so it's just, I think, better in rental ordinance to just remove it. We, we did try to define it and redefine it, but in the end, it was just easier to say, you know, what do we use it for? We use it for occupancy. We can rely on square footage and size of homes for occupancy, we don't, we don't need to define what a family is for people, so. Licensing and inspecting all group homes in the same manner also helps ensure tenants are afforded the same safety and I think it's time that we kinda, you know, bring that all together too. Um, these updates overall will help make Bloomington a vibrant, vibrant, safe and healthy place for people of all races, cultures and abilities to thrive. Are there any questions?
Council questions on this? Councilmember Lohman?
I thank you for the presentation, uh, excellent as usual. I know I asked this, uh, ahead of time and, uh, um, I'll ask it again, cause I just want, uh, folks to be able to, to, to hear the questions, uh, that staff, uh, review before I get to it. So, um, understanding what this policy is, um, I, I, I know that, uh, I've been asking for a long time with regard to, uh, smoking and, uh, in these, uh, things, I, I think about in terms of, you know, we look at the statistics there and how it impacts, uh, uh, certain members of the, of our, our population. Um, and I know that it's, you know, not appropriate to put it in, in this one here, or at least I've been advised in terms of, of how it's, uh, been, been written, but, you know, as another council member, as I said earlier, uh, Councilmember DeSantis had said, in, uh, you know, I, I hope that as we, you know, we've done a nice job of having this equity lens when we look at, um, our policies, but from a health, uh, and all policies lens, I, I think it would be great to have, uh, that reviewed when we look at these items as well. Um, again, I don't know where this fits at, um, I keep, I keep pounding the table, uh, any place I can get it, uh, we really do need to look at, uh, uh, the disadvantage, uh, that, that folks have, uh, if they're living in these units, uh, where smoking is there, you have second, third hand, fourth hand smoke, uh, that's there. And, uh, I just don't know, uh, where we can get it in policy to get that eliminated, uh, to prevent, uh, these folks from, from gaining, uh, uh, an adverse, uh, effects as they go on and try to compete, uh, in our, in our future as residents in Bloomington. So, um, I know this is not the right place to put it, but I'm just gonna make the comment now, so.
Council additional comments? Questions? Seeing none? This is our third public hearing of the evening and I'll call a public hearing for item four point three regarding our rental housing code amendments. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak to item four point three? Don't see anyone coming forward. Leah, do we have anyone on the phone wishing to speak to item four point three?
We don't have anyone on the phone line as of the moment. Mayor Basi, you may continue.
Thank you, Leah. Last call for anyone in the chambers? No one coming forward. Council, I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing on item four point three.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Nelson to close the public hearing on item four point three. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Uh, I just wanna say, uh, thank you for the work on this. I mean, this is, this is pretty inside baseball, nuts and bolts kind of stuff and, but it's, it's important kind of stuff and frankly, it's, um, I can't for the life of me remember why we passed tho- those ordinances in two thousand fourteen, I, I don't know. But it, you're right, it is somewhat embarrassing now that we would think that way and it's, um, so between, between cleaning it up in that manner and just cleaning it up to make it more practical and more usable and a better document, a better, a better bit of p- policy for the city of Bloomington and for the people who are affected by it, well done, thank you for that. I think it's, uh, I think it's, it's, it's a good effort and, uh, I know that's going on throughout the city with all the different pieces that we have and I think it's, it's definitely worthwhile effort, so. Uh, Jamie, good job and, and staff, good job on, on, on taking this all on, I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I know that, I know the council recognizes it and, and Lynn highlighted part of it during her presentation, but I, I do wanna call special attention to a couple of things. One is the, the, the level of, uh, planfulness on the, uh, engagement around this and, and the extent that they went to make sure that people who are impacted by the decision have voice in the, in the decision-making process. And secondly, the fact that we're piloting the racial equity impact assessment tool on this project and, and the work that our, uh, racial equity coordinator, Faith Jackson, is doing to support community development and the fact that community development is incorporating, uh, that work into much of their processes right now, I think is really demonstrating, um, success in moving forward the initiatives that the council has championed. So I wanna, I wanna just acknowledge staff for their work to make sure that your commitment is being followed through on.
You're here. Councilmember Coulter, then Councilmember Nelson. Councilmember Coulter.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, goodness. I just wanted to echo your comments and, and thank staff and, you know, this is, I think it, it demonstrates, um, the importance of the work that we've done on, on racial equity, cause this was, to my mind at least, it didn't seem like something that necessarily was, was sort of brought up at the outset, um, with the intent of being a sort of racial equity initiative. But, you know, we, we've seen what, you know, what the, what the information shows, that it, it will, I, I think it, it does have some important implications for our efforts as far as racial equity in the city of Bloomington. So I think that's, um, that just really, like I say, shows, um, why it's, it's, you know, something like this, this racial equity impact assessment is really, really important so that we can understand these impacts in everything we do, so that we're, we're being intentional, that we are, are sort of living out the values and, and moving forward to the city manager's comment, moving forward, um, the priorities that, that we have stated in, in real way. So I just, I think that's really, really remarkable and, um, just wanna again, thank staff for, for the work on this. This is, this is good policy and, and just good government, generally.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things first, I just wanna disclose that I own a rental property, single-family home, that's a rental, so I would be subject to this regulation and I received my license in my, in the email today. So, thank you. So, um, got that renewed, uh, staff, as always, did a great job on, on the whole process, super easy. And I also received the letter, the outreach letter, and I very much appreciated that and wanna echo, uh, the city manager's comments, uh, that I thought you did a really good job, the information in the packet. I had a lot of comments from people and it was really good to see that if they had questions, they seemed to be resolved, so I think that process went extremely well. I also appreciate the information in the packet about corporate ownership, I know that's a question that has been raised and it's nice to see that data, it's nice to see us looking at that. I know that that isn't specifically addressed here, um, but it, it's nice to have ba- more background and detail on what's going on in the community, so, um, I think this is well done and, and it seems like a really nice cleanup, uh, for, for this ordinance, so.
Councilmember DeSantis.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Councilmember Nelson, I wanted to, I was going to draw your attention to the information that we got through my questions, but it sounds like you read that, which is amazing. So that's great, uh, yeah, because I think that that's a, there's a, a question that a lot of our residents are asking, uh, me about for sure and, you know, if you think about why they come to me, in part, it's because I happen to be the representative for our two college campus areas and so the proportion of rental housing might be higher in those areas and all. And there has been resident concerns about, um, rental housing, um, and its upkeep and its maintenance and its, you know, five, you know, folks there, each with a car and they're parking all over this, I mean, there's lots of things and there's a question about the aesthetic of our single-family residences, right? And I understand that. So the reason for the question and the reason for the data, which I knew Ms. Moore could get me, she's so good at what she does, was, uh, to find out what exactly what we were talking about, like, was there a hedge fund, you know, corporate investor outsider kind of problem in Bloomington? And, and the data, uh, suggests that there's not, which is fantastic, the majority, it looks like of the homes that are, the, the, the largest, um, uh, owners, if you will, are local residents or at least metro area residents and that of course includes the city as well. But, if thirty-five percent of our dwellings are city licensed rentals, the question I think we, we are gonna ask ourselves as we think strategically about this in the future is, um, you know, do, do we want the number of single-family homes or duplexes in this city to be rented out, or do we want that number to shift to ownership, right? That's, that's not a question for, like, related to this particular, um, you know, activity necessarily, but I think it's a question, uh, from a housing perspective that we wanna consider, because it might mean that we have to double down, if you will, on building more of that, if that's the way we have to deal with that versus, you know, continuing to build rental units, you know, because they're, they're do- they're more doable. I, I continue to be concerned that, um, without the ability for us to do, you know, townhomes and, and condo buildings and other things like that, that we're gonna get stuck at some point. And, this, this, if this, you know, um, uh, owned, but rented home thing continues to grow, um, that just makes it, that just makes the, the homeownership prospect for, especially the folks on the lower end of the spectrum, maybe our BIPOC residents and things like that, who, who can't get in in the price points that, that we, we might need them to get into, even with help from us. So, um, it was, it was eye-opening to kind of juxtapose those two things and I'm really grateful for all the work that you all did, um, because it really provides a much more well-rounded picture, I think, of the landscape, uh, uh, for what we need to tackle when we think about the next phase of housing in, in Bloomington. Thanks.
Absolutely. Also, if there's no further questions or comments on this, I would look for motion on item four point three.
I'd be happy to move this.
Councilmember Lohman?
I'll move to adopt, uh, ordinance updating rental housing code standards to be consistent with changes to the Minnesota statutes for assisted living facilities, adding rental license requirements for group housing licenses by the state, adopting the two thousand twenty-one International Property Maintenance Code by reference, updating dwelling units and group housing occupancy limits, adding a sixty-day license application limit, updating provisions for reinspection fees, deleting crime fee provisions and miscellaneous updates for clarity thereby amending chapters nine, fourteen, fifteen, PDXA of the city code. Hopefully we're the right thing.
We have a motion by Councilmember Lohman, a second by Councilmember Coulter for the motion as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Councilmember Coulter?
Resolution, oh, thank you. Authorizing summary publication of ordinance, uh, an ordinance updating rental housing code standards to be consistent with changes to Minnesota statutes for assisted living facilities, adding rental license requirements for group housing licensed by the state, adopting the two thousand twenty-one International Property Maintenance Code by reference, updating dwelling unit and group housing occupancy limits, adding a sixty-day license application limit, updating provisions for reinspection fees, deleting crime-free provisions and miscellaneous deleting crime free provisions and miscellaneous updates for clarity, thereby amending chapters nine, 14, 15, and Appendix A of the city code.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Coulter, a second by Councilmember Loman.
Thank you, Mayor.
On the motion as stated. Hearing no further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Thank you both very much for the motion. And thank you, uh, we just missed Lynn. Thank you. Thank you much, Lynn. Well done.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, can I, can I ask an ancillary question of Ms. Moore before she leaves?
You may have missed her, but and we are, we are at the hour mark right now.
I have a very quick question. No, you don't have to come to the table. I just, really quickly, Ms. Moore, you and I had a chance to sit down and talk about these changes to the code. Does this, does this satisfy what, what we were discussing, or is that, okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Item 4.4 is our final public hearing of this evening, and it is an ordinance amending chapters 10, 14, 15, and Appendix A of the city code, which I think we just did at least twice, uh, in a couple of times. Mr. Junker is here this evening. Good evening, Mr. Junker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, and I am the easiest thing you have tonight. So what we have here and behind the scenes, as COVID was ramping up, we're working with building inspections to move anything licensing to licensing. So we actually did take over contractor and time of sale a couple of years ago. And we assigned this to our licensing specialist, Diana Gort. And when you have new eyes on old code, you find house cleaning items. And so that's what we're here to talk about tonight. So, do you have a little PowerPoint for you here? So we've been doing refuse haulers for a while. And again, as we started looking at this, we noticed that it didn't really talk about those who haul and collect refuse. We're not going to license anybody who just happens to be operating in our city. It's those who are actually collecting our city. So that was kind of the gist of that simple cleanup in, in, in chapter 10. Contractors, you kind of dealt with this a while ago, um, and then we, we realized we missed a few things. So, um, heat, HVAC, refrigeration, and gas all had to get separate licenses. 75 bucks, 75 bucks, 75 bucks. The state decided to call this all mechanical, and so we've changed that now. So it's 75 bucks, one time. And you're not coming back over and over again for each one of those things. You pull an HVAC permit, then you got to come back and get a refrigeration permit. So easier for them, easier for us, um, much, much cleaner. We've got some, uh, we had some other weird language in there, talking about expiration date. The license is good and expires at the end of the year. We don't see some of these contracts for two or three years. And if you really read that, black and white, earlier in 14, if you're late, we can start adding late fees on there. This really isn't a, a license that expires. It is going to expire at the end of the year. But if you don't come back for two years, we're not going to punish you for that. So we just change it to you must have that license before you apply. And that's really how we operate. Somebody goes to the BNI counter, building inspection counter, tries to pull a permit. We see they're not active in the computer. They just quick run down to our, our, our counter, show they have the insurance account, cards, all that stuff, and then they go back and it's all good to go. Some his and her gender titles in, in 14-199. Um, again, there was, all the titles were building inspection. We'll do the testing, building inspection will issue the license. We've divided that throughout the code. Again, the mechanical system, uh, terms cleaned up. Some bond requirements, very confusing language in there, and our insurance, insurance and bonding, a lot of this is handled by Department of Labor and Industry, or sometimes they have to give us the license. So just clarifying some of those things. Flammable tank is a special thing. I think just by the name, you understand that one, that we, we want to make sure they got the proper insurance for that one. It's kind of scary. And then plumbing contractors, we don't actually license them. They register with us, so it's handled by Department of Labor. We just want to make sure that they have the proper, uh, things in order, and we're just checking the Department of Labor website a lot for that. And then, um, again, the, um, matching up the, the mechanical issues. And, uh, and simplifying those fees both, uh, um, by definition, and then that new Appendix A. So just real simple, as you see in the, in the code amendments now. Very, very simple on our apps and, and what they need to pay. And then, uh, time of sale evaluators, you just dealt with this recently. And, uh, something when we went to implement this, we realized that, I know this was ping-ponging back and forth. It was going to be all staff, a combination of both, so on and so forth. And a couple of things got accidentally stricken, and we need to add those back in. So identifying that city employees are not charged a fee. And the one thing that we never want to think about, but if we ever do need it, we want it in code, is if we do need to deny or revoke or suspend a license. And that got accidentally stricken because we were thinking it was employee only, and then when we brought that private sector back in there, we forgot to get it back in. So, um, one big oops there. So that's about it. Like I said, I just want to recognize Diane Gort, working with Maureen O'Brien up in legal. The two of them got this all put together. I'm just here to present. So I give them all the credit.
Thank you, Mr. Junker. Council questions? Councilmember, uh, Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick ones here first. Why do we have separate licenses for things that also have a license at the state level, like plumbers and, well, we didn't tell the plumbers, but don't, uh, mechanical contractors have a state license?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, they are somewhat registered with Department of Labor and Industry, but not necessarily licensed. So we, St. Paul, Minneapolis and Bloomington requires comp cards. They take a test with one of those cities. We accept their cities or we offer our own test to make sure that they are, uh, able and understanding those trades. So those, some, it's really weird when you get into the different trades and the different things, how many are handled by the state and how many are handled individually. So.
Thanks for the clarification. And then one question that I get surprisingly frequently about Bloomington is why we require permits for gas lines when people get appliances? They go to the local retailer, get a new range, and that retailer then tells them, well, I can't install it. You have to get somebody to do that. And it's been explained to me and I get it, but I just, it's a question that comes up a lot. So if you could explain that, uh, for people, I think that would be helpful.
Well, Councilmember Nelson, I don't know if I can explain all the details and the contractors, and again, why you and I can do our own gas and electric sometime and we shouldn't. So, and when we should be pulling permits and have things inspected. So, um, yeah, I, I would, uh, refer that to our, our building inspection manager, Duke Johnson, and he can explain that a lot better. So I'll follow up with him and see if we can get something out to you.
Sounds good. Well, I've, I've had the explanation. Maybe we can talk about it at some point. Just, I, it surprisingly often gets asked. So, um, and then just a question of curiosity on the solid waste haulers licensing. Is it possible to add more standards in there for things related to performance that may not be covered within our contract with them?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Nelson, uh, I guess we should send us your ideas. Again, we do have, the residential haulers are under contracts. So if there's some things we'd like us to address and look at, please let us know. And again, the, uh, commercial haulers are, we do have those separated. So back in the day before this was revamped, when I first started here, there was a lot of inspection details, I guess, that were done a long, long time ago. We actually had to put stickers on them and, and environmental health will go check and see if they're dripping too much. I don't know what they were actually checking back then. A lot of that was whittled out over time. And when we went to the new, uh, contract, a lot of it went away. So if there's something that you think needs to come back or be looked at, please let us know.
Okay. I absolutely will.
Council, additional questions? Seeing no hands, I will call this public hearing. This is a public hearing, item 4.4. It's a public hearing on an ordinance amending chapters 10, 14, 15, and Appendix A of the city code. Anyone in the council chambers wishing to speak on this? Seeing no one coming forward. Uh, Lea, do we have anyone on the line who wishes to speak to item 4.4?
We still don't have anyone on the phone line as of the moment. Mayor Bassi, you may continue.
Thank you so much. Last call for anybody in the chambers? Counsel, nobody coming forward. I'd look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Martin, a second by Councilmember Dalisandro to close the public hearing on item 4.4. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. I will take a quick commercial here. And Lea, uh, thank you for your work this evening, but, uh, we are done with our, our public comment possibilities in, in our meeting. So thank you. You may, you may sign off for the evening.
Thank you, Mayor Bassi.
Thank you. So, counsel, um, any other questions? Anything additional? We need information on, on this? This is, uh, basic housekeeping, housekeeping kind of stuff, I think. If not, I would look for action on item 4.4.
Uh, Mayor, I can make that motion.
Councilmember Martin.
Uh, Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance amending chapters 10, 14, and 10, 14, 15, and Appendix A of the city code related to licensing of mechanical contractors, time of sale housing evaluators, and solid waste haulers.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Loman to adopt the ordinance amending the city code as stated. Hearing no further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Councilmember Martin.
Mayor, I will move that we adopt a resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance amending chapters 10, 14, 15, and Appendix A of the city code related to licensing of mechanical contractors, time of sale housing evaluators, and solid waste haulers.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Loman for summary publication on this item. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Onto item five, our organizational business, and our first item up on our, under organizational business is a, uh, a conversation regarding the study that is underway or considered regarding the hotel and office conversions. And Mr. James, joining us once again.
Good evening again. Get the slides up again. And, uh, yeah, this first item or this study item here is on hotel and office conversions. And we certainly, um, you know, heard more and more about this, uh, throughout the pandemic as some of those occupancies remain low. But, um, if we go to the next slide here, the, uh, big question tonight is kind of keep in the back of your mind, you know, should we encourage, remain neutral, or discourage hotel and office conversions? And well, it's easy to say, oh, yeah, we should encourage. Um, I'll go into a little bit more detail and explain what that means. But first, I've got, uh, some quick background and I'll just summarize a few of these. I'm happy to go into more detail later. But, um, you know, benefits certainly about, uh, increasing the housing supply and then also, you know, with some hotels or maybe even offices, there's smaller rooms, so it's might be easier to make them affordable, um, from the developer's perspective, especially, you know, it's not a redevelopment project. So, um, it's easier to hit the, the lower affordability, uh, units with conversions. You know, concerns, uh, around reduced revenue, you know, we do have a fair amount of hotels in the city that contribute a significant amount to the general fund. Concern also that, you know, the hotels that do convert might be the ones that we, um, would prefer, you know, just be a redevelopment site. You know, concern that some of those hotels might be too old and, um, have outdated systems. Next slide. So, yeah, just background on, uh, you can see the drop there in occupancy with hotels anyway, with the dark blue line with the pandemic. You know, the green line is showing, um, 2021, a little bit increased occupancy, but still below the 2019 pre-pandemic occupancy. I think those numbers are projec- projected to, um, get back to pre-pandemic either by the end of this year or next year, um, for hotels anyway. You know, o- office occupancy starting to return to as people return, uh, from the work-from-home scenario. But, um, you know, it's still kind of tough to predict on some fronts. Now, it's certainly easy to imagine hotels converting, you know, they're already set up for living space with, uh, you know, various utilities already in place. Offices might require more remodeling, but not impossible to convert. You know, can imagine concrete structure more difficult to work with than, um, others. I've primarily focused on hotels with this project. Just to help narrow down our discussion here, but, you know, the direction we receive could certainly apply to offices as well. So with hotels then, um, you know, these are those, uh, pictured on, on the map here. And, you know, there are very, a variety of barriers to conversions, and zoning is just one of the pieces. But zoning is the, is what the city can control. So, um, next slide. So quite a few of our hotels are already in a zoning district that allows residential, or at least, uh, a mixed use with residential. But it's really, um, on this next slide here, the multifamily residential standards in the zoning code that are a barrier to conversions. So, um, you know, the reality is needing to meet these multifamily standards. Pretty much every type of conversion will need some form of flexibility from, uh, the code requirement. So I've listed a few of the common barriers here. Enclosed parking is a big one. Every require one enclosed space per unit. So, you know, a lot of our hotels don't have the parking structure already, or it's not big enough, so that, you know, is a significant expense if it was to convert. And then, uh, next slide. So, um, I, I will add though, that, uh, there are, um, you know, the, these standards can be restrictive. We also have ways to achieve, you know, flexibility from those already built into the code. So one is through the opportunity housing ordinance, uh, the deviation from code requirements allowed if projects provide so many affordable units. And then the other is through planned development flexibility, and that's more case-by-case basis. But I just highlight here, you know, if we look just at enclosed parking and potential deviation, um, from the code, you know, under the OHO, if a project provides enough units at, say, like 30% AMI, then it could potentially, you know, get that maximum deviation of 100% and not need to re- provide that enclosed parking. So now the flexibility that's there is largely sufficient for, um, you know, to, uh, it's largely sufficient, uh, for conversions. However, it's a matter of providing enough affordable units to get that. Next slide. So we do have a handful of hotels where the zoning prohibits residential. And six of these are in the airport runway district, uh, shown here. And so, you know, uh, that district prohibits residential already. And so it's these other seven hotels, uh, west of I-35, where the city could rezone them, would, would need to rezone them in order to consider conversion. And so, um, with those then, the city or staff is looking for direction. Are there, you know, certain criteria, if we're approached by developers, that we should look at with each of these sites to give, you know, developers some idea? Would we, would we maybe be open to rezoning them, or is it a definite no? And so we started this table here, you know, separated by columns. Is it, you know, nice to have criteria, or are there some criteria where we absolutely must have to consider rezoning? And maybe it's just a couple of the must haves. Maybe it's all, um, certainly open to feedback on that. Next slide. And so going back to the first question, you know, discourage, if we want to discourage these, it would mean, you know, no code amendments going forward related to this, and that we would, um, discourage use of planned development flexibility then. Whereas today, we fit more within the remain neutral, you know, we're not considering code amendments. I'll add to that in a minute. And we're, you know, primarily relying on, uh, OHO or planned development flexibility where it applies. You know, encourage, i- in some ways, we are doing this today, um, in that, uh, so we do have the OHO. There is, um, on the work plan, there's, uh, uh, a space for the SRO standards. I always forget what that stands for, single residence occupancy, something along those lines. But the idea is that each tenant has a separate living spa, like a bedroom quarters, and then there's common areas for perhaps a kitchen or bathroom. And so, uh, to consider those standards, that is on the planning, uh, work plan for the year. And so, you know, in some ways, we're already looking to encourage, um, these, but we aren't looking at other, um, code amendments and, but open to that option here tonight. And so this has gone before the, um, you know, a variety of commissions, boards here, planning commission, HRA, and port authority. And, um, you know, there's general, let me pull up my, so general sent- sentiment to remain neutral. However, certainly interest in, um, encouraging conversions where it makes sense. You know, there's certainly interest in providing more affordable housing and hitting our, say, that 30% AMI target. But a lot of the commissioners agreed that, you know, But a lot of the commissioners agreed that, you know, looking at more into those SRO standards are a way to encourage conversions then. You know, with regard to the criteria, there were several commissioners that brought up access to like high-quality transit as being important. And then several planning commissioners also expressed kind of disinterest in rezoning in industrial areas, but open elsewhere. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions. So, and sorry, let me add, I did spell out the questions here, but one is looking at, do we need to consider code amendments beyond just those SRO standards? And then for rezoning, looking for feedback on these criteria. Thank you.
Councilmember Lohman, question?
So I'm kind of just thinking about this, this particular piece. One of the questions I had is what the health impacts are. I noticed that a number of these hotels are located, you know, conveniently around highways. And one of the things that I've heard is that, you know, when you have a residential area by a highway, it can have some adverse effects. And so I think for myself, as I'm thinking about whether or not I encourage it, you know, remain neutral or discourage these hotels, you know, we just saw earlier the demographics, again, of who typically, and I'm assuming these would be rental units, I mean, because of the way that things are set up right now in terms of condo, condo market, that's probably not likely. So that's just something that in the back of my mind, I'm thinking about is, you know, what are the health impacts of these potential residents? And are we creating future health issues as we place more residents? You know, one in a building that is not maybe up to the standards, that if you were to build an apartment, you know, right next to a highway, that you would kind of do that if that's what you had in mind? And maybe there is no difference at all. So I'm just curious about that as I'm looking at this.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, Councilmember Lohman. So, you know, that was a consideration here. Do we want to encourage conversion more for those hotels more distant from freeways? That certainly is, you know, a health concern with regard to air quality or noise again. You know, that said, we do have some multifamily projects near highways, too. So open to feedback, those good comments and noted. Thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess first, and I mentioned this before when it came up with the planning work plan, I guess I still have some concerns about SROs, maybe even just conceptually, just the, I get it, but the idea of sacrificing, say, kitchen or bathroom facilities, or calling those an amenity now that can be sacrificed in the name of affordability, it still sits weird with me. But I guess I'll speak more to that once we've got some concrete information coming out of that process. But in general, I like this table here and taking a little bit more of an aggressive stance as a way to, I'm not even sure what the analogy would be, but kind of a backdoor way to bring in naturally occurring affordable housing, kind of mid-life cycle, with the ideas around, is there a way we can mitigate some of those environmental health concerns, things of that nature? And I'm sure there would be a lag time in bringing new hotel projects online, but from what I've seen in this community, the hospitality industry does not have a problem meeting market demand and putting up hotels when they think they can fill their rooms. So if we can knock out or take a big swing at the lowest end of our affordability offerings in the community, helping to diversify our economy even a little bit further, and then that's, maybe I'm being too optimistic, but knowing down the line, we'll still have opportunities for hotel development to fill demand once it comes back, I would be interested in moving pretty hard on this.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. So I asked this question at the, when we talked about this with the HRA, do you have a concept of what, understanding that, you know, at the local level, it's probably not possible to get this kind of granular data, but at sort of the higher level, maybe at the national level, what the demand is for these kind of conversions?
Yeah, I can share. It does seem to be increasing to some extent. We're aware of at least one office conversion that's, you know, that's expressed interest now. And there's been four or five hotels that have expressed interest, too, just in Bloomington.
Yeah, I think that's kind of my expectation and understanding as well. And I, you know, I think obviously particularly as sort of the definition of an office changes, right? As, you know, you know, it was just last week, I think Target said that they're not sending back, you know, a lot of their employees, if not all of them, I think, in their downtown office are not going back to work in the office, right? And so I guess to sort of echo the comments that I made previously, I think we're only going to see more of this kind of thing happen rather than less. And I, you know, I am still of the opinion, I think, you know, to Councilmember Martin's point, I have questions about the SRO concept, generally speaking. I think there is a lot of potential, and I think, actually, I really like the way, the metaphor that Councilmember Martin used, that it's almost, it is almost like naturally occurring affordable housing that wasn't previously affordable housing. And so I think that makes a lot of sense. And I do, I do think this has the potential, and this is something that I have brought up before, I think this does have the potential to get at some of those lower levels of affordability where the standards and so on that we put forward and that we show are not, are not quite getting to where we would like in terms of that affordability level. So I guess, you know, like I said, I'm still kind of of the opinion it's better to have this kind of thing in place and meet it proactively so that it's, you know, we're clear about what our standards and expectations are coming into it, so that it doesn't kind of happen as someone comes to us, oh, well, what about this? Oh, it turns out, maybe that's not the way we wanted to do it, you know, that way. So that, I think that's kind of where I'm at on this.
Well, I'll say, I'm firmly in the remain neutral camp right now for a variety of reasons. I also share some questions about the SROs and some questions about how this would all work. And just looking at your chart here, in my mind, a good number of those nice to haves, actually, in my mind, are must haves. I just think about some of our office buildings or some of our older hotels, and if they were converted to residential, if they were converted to residences, the surrounding amenities, the surrounding, just what is around them just doesn't seem conducive to living there. And especially if you're in a single-room occupancy situation where assuming that you'd want to get out and about, perhaps, there's not, there's a lack of green space, there's not a lot of amenities, there's not a lot of pedestrian-friendly areas. As Councilmember Lohman said, they're right on the strip. I mean, that, there's a lot of pieces to this that I'm just uncomfortable with because of how it would all work together. You know, it'd be different if it was a downtown. If it was a Target downtown, I mean, if Target converted those to condos, they'd sell pretty quick right now, I think. They would be just fine because they have the downtown and they have the downtown amenities around them. And I don't think we can say the same with our office buildings, and certainly not with a lot of our, a lot of our hotels that might be considering this kind of thing. So it just makes me nervous. And I'm also, I agree completely the need to find a way to get to that thirty percent AMI, to try and do that. But I have said before, and I'll continue to say, what I want to do more than anything is to make sure that we're not the only ones doing this. I mean, this, we, right now, we are, we are lapping our neighbors in terms of how we're addressing this and the things that we're doing, and they're fine with that right now. And I think we need to figure out a way to, to make sure that this is a metro-wide effort to find these solutions and not just pockets of cities here and there. Councilmember Carter?
Actually, that? Thank you, Mayor. So I also am in the neutral bucket, I guess, right now. I'm supportive of staff's recommendation not to proactively rezone, but to have the criteria in place. I think that makes a lot of sense. I guess, given the challenges of doing these types of transitions, I just fear that even if the goal was deeply affordable, that it would be very challenging to get there. And I agree, just concern about just the environment in which these buildings are in and the livability of those areas. So, so I'm not saying that I'm against them, that's why I'm in the neutral bucket, but I do have some questions and some concerns. And I would be interested to know, going back to, I can't remember who asked the question, but just nationally, what, I mean, really, what is the demand for these type of? I mean, I hear that there is interest in Bloomington from some hotels, but I also know that they've been in a really hard situation lately, and so they are probably, like, looking at different ideas. But I guess I'd just be curious to know truly what's the demand for these type of units, because I really, I wouldn't want to be kind of at the forefront of leading the way and then realize, you know, five years down the road, we have a bunch of, you know, small apartments that actually aren't being, you know, rented out. And so I guess that's where my thinking is at right now. Thank you.
Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I actually have some thoughts on this one, too, as I listen to the conversation. So I'm of the belief that, you know, people vote with their feet. And the, you know, the concerns understandably about green space or amenities or things like that, I think that a lot of people who are looking at their living arrangement will make decisions that are best for them based on what their needs and wants are. And so I don't know that the absence of amenities is necessarily detrimental to a project. I also get a little bit concerned just about ongoing commercial viability of hotel properties, and then what that potentially means for the city from maybe a public safety perspective or even from a tax perspective, if some of these hotels that perhaps are looking at alternatives such as conversion because of a declining revenue future for themselves. Not having that option potentially puts them into a downward spiral that it may be hard to recover from. And so making sure that there is some sort of an option may be actually beneficial for the health of the lodging market in the city. And the third thought occurs to me, too, is that we still want to maintain some control. And so, you know, making sure that perhaps there's a way that a prospective developer can document the interest that does occur in the marketplace so that we don't get properties or developments that are built on spec without answering some of these questions that the council has raised, and, you know, on the theory that if you build it, they will come, right? That we want to make sure that they're, that they're being thoughtful about these issues so that we don't see the flip side of the downward spiral if they do convert away from a commercial property. So just a little bit of food for thought.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Councilmember Nelson and then Councilmember DeLisandro. Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. So just quickly, it's my understanding a lot of the hotels are already in areas that are zoned for residential, that they could be there already. And so if I look at it as just the land, would we allow for a multifamily residential project there? And if our zoning says yeah, then I'm struggling to see why we wouldn't support that to be there. We've already said that that's an appropriate use in that area. The question in my mind is having a planful approach to doing that, to converting those buildings, or waiting until the market comes and then trying to just ad hoc an approach on the fly. And so I would be more on the encourage side and be planful in how we approach that in those areas that we've already determined makes sense for multifamily residential projects to be in. So I would be more leaning towards the encourage. I don't know at this point if I would go as far as rezoning some hotels in there. Maybe an argument could be made, but at least, you know, considering the number that we have already zoned for residential, I think we should be planful for how we approach it.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Agree with a lot of what Councilmember Nelson said. I think, especially if you think about, like, the Normandale area where several of the dots, I think, were located, you know, the only reason why that isn't a beautifully walkable place is because the stuff that's there, which, you know, isn't there, right? But man, do we have space right across the street on Normandale for, you know, where CWs is and all that kind of stuff that has, is ripe for, you know, new economic development. And then I'm walking two blocks, and I've got Normandale Lake, and I've got a whole bunch of amenities. So, you know, I think it is possible for us to reimagine these nodes in a way that makes those amenities doable, if we can be planful about it. You know, think about them as, this as an opportunity from an overall economic development perspective, and, you know, take a broader lens to these nodes. I think we'd be in good shape. I think the same about, you know, some of the dots were not that far away from, like, the Penn American District where we also have some stuff. We just, everybody wants to get Southdale taken care of. So can we, can we use these as incentivizers for some of that, like, larger node development stuff we've been thinking about anyway? I think that would be kind of a cool concept. The other thing I was just thinking about is, as I continue to try to crack this nut of why we can't get condos built in this city, which we know why, but one of the things you said, Sean, made me, made me think. You said that there were challenges with some of our commercial buildings, potentially more difficult challenges with some of those because of the concrete. But isn't that an amazing thing that we have? Because isn't that one of the reasons we can't do condos? Is because it's more expensive to pour concrete, and everybody wants to do the wood frame stuff that we allow for rentals, right? So I, I don't know, maybe I'm taking too rosy of a lens to a lot of this stuff, but there's, there's these alternatives we can consider, too, right? You know, that might, that might solve a problem that we, that we aren't considering that allows us to maybe do, you know, a fifty-five and over, like, low affordable condo community, or, you know, a different kind of multifamily concept, you know, where, I don't know, you know, somebody's willing to have a, have a mobility truck that drives people around as opposed to us having to worry about parking. I mean, you know, there's just lots of ideas, right? And I would hate for us to not, not encourage people to be thinking about this stuff. So to the extent that if it does mean moving things into the encourage bucket helps us spend time and energy being planful, I would be supportive of that. But at a minimum, even in the neutral area, I'd still like us to have a bead on this stuff. I tend to be a little bit more pro SRO than I think the other members in council, so I'm okay with letting that kind of percolate and see if we can move some of that along as well. But I'm okay with neutral, and I would be fine with encourage, too, because I think there's some neat stuff here. Thanks.
Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So actually, based on what I'm hearing everyone say, we're pretty much all saying the same thing. I mean, I, because I'm hearing only seven hotels would need to be rezoned, right? That are, that currently do not qualify because they are in areas that do not allow residential. The rest of them, we wouldn't have to worry about rezoning. It's just developing criteria, which I think we've all agreed on, we should have. And so, I don't know, I think, call it neutral or encourage, it doesn't feel like we, I think we're all kind of saying the same thing.
Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, maybe, maybe we're just neutrally encouraging. But I, I think, yes. As a parent, you get very good at being neutrally encouraging, I think. So I guess the other piece that I would add is, you know, the thought occurs to me that one of the things that we talk about when it comes to housing, and it's going to sound a little bit strange for me, I know, to sort of extol the virtues of the free market. But, you know, one of the challenges that we have run into time and time again when it comes to housing in Bloomington is that we're a built-up, we're a built-up city, that we don't, we don't have a lot of vacant land the way a lot of other cities do. And so I think, you know, being a little more encouraging on these kinds of conversions gets at some of that piece, that, I mean, these are, these are spaces in many cases already, you know, zoned for residential that are, that relatively speaking, you know, perhaps, and I'm not a developer, but I would think in many ways it would be more affordable to redevelop an existing hotel or office building than to build a brand-new housing complex. But I think that gets at some of that piece where, to the point where even if it's not necessarily directly getting at some of that lower level of affordability through the OHO, that there is at least, there's at least more supply within the market, and that we're sort of relieving some of that pressure. Because, I mean, last I heard, our overall Because, I mean, last I heard, our, our overall vacancy level in Bloomington is still quite low. I mean, it's still somewhere around, I mean, it's less than 2% I think is what I, what my recollection was. So, it's still, I mean, really, really low. And so, I, I think this is a way to sort of, I would think relatively easily, put more on the market in a way that might relieve some of that pressure.
Counsel, I think we've given them enough to chew on tonight. I want to keep us moving here. So, we, is, is it burning a hole in your pocket, Councilmember? Councilmember Nelson to, to finish this up as we move on here. Councilmember Nelson.
Sorry, Mayor, but thank you very much. I, I just had one question because when we talk about these conversions, I am wondering about if this could legally be a way to encourage condo and homeownership? Because it may be a way to address the structural warranty issue that the builders have. Because if they don't modify that exterior structure, I don't know that that would continue to be covered by this Minnesota statutory warranty. And that's a big issue for them. So, this may give them an opportunity to do condo projects. And so, I'd just like to ask staff to maybe do a little bit of research on that. Obviously, anything they did on the interior would be covered by warranties, but that's where they're worried about the bulk water coming in, that type of thing.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you, yes. Have we given enough to work on there?
Yeah, thank you.
Very good. And Mr. James, do I understand this is your last meeting with us this evening?
It is. It's bittersweet.
Because we, we keep you too late every time and then postpone your stuff?
No, I've really appreciated my time and, you know, the opportunities I've had here. And I thank you, you all, for making this a welcoming place to work. And it's a lot of good people here, but, you know, just a little bit better fit, a little bit closer to home elsewhere, so.
Understood. Well, thank you. Thank you for your, your work and, and the thoughtfulness that you brought to your work. And enjoyed seeing your presentations and, and seeing what you've brought before us. So, best of luck to you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for listening to me so much tonight.
Absolutely. Thanks. Counsel, here's what I would like to do. We're at 22. What I'm going to do is I'm going to make a motion that we extend to 11:15 if we need to, just so we don't have any pressure in trying to rush through things. But I'm going to make that motion right now that if, to meet our time deadline, that we extend to an 11:15 timeframe. You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. No further counsel discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Now, we're not rushed. And if we get out of here before then, nothing says we have to fill it all the way to 11:15. I just want to make sure that we don't rush, Ms. Capione, as we talk about next, our next item, which is a charitable gambling overview on item 5.2. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's nice to see you tonight. It was a gamble whether or not I would get a turn tonight, right? To make sure everybody's awake. So, this is designed to be a very high-level overview of charitable gambling, how it works in the state of Minnesota, what cities' options are for regulating charitable gambling. I'm kind of with the angle that if the council has further items that they would like us to do a deeper dive into, we could come back with some additional suggestions or regulations, do some potential engagement with our current licensees if there are changes that might affect them. So, really, this is a very high-level overview, especially to the question of what can we do to ensure that local gambling proceeds can stay within our community or benefit our community. So, today, we'll do a quick definition of what charitable gambling regulations are in Minnesota, summarize our options, and then, again, answer any questions and determine where we might want to look further, or we don't. So, Minnesota has a definition for charitable gambling that basically outlines the types of games that can be played, the organizations that are eligible for a license, and then how those proceeds can be spent. So, in a nutshell, that's what charitable gambling looks like in the state of Minnesota. Next slide. Ultimately, the state has final licensing authority for charitable gambling, and they're also typically the main regulatory body for charitable gambling issues that may arise. However, charitable gambling licenses are signed off by cities before the state approval. And so, with that, cities can be more restrictive than state law in their charitable gambling regulations. But there's always a caveat, right? But there are certain areas where we are restricted in how we can regulate charitable gambling. And those relate to investigation fees or regulatory taxes, charitable contribution funds, and trade area regulations. And so, I'll dive into each one of those next. Oh, and before I do that, so being the city coedner that I am, I did a dive into 16 other cities' gambling regulations to kind of provide us a gauge for where we are in relation to some of our neighboring communities and some of our similarly sized communities. And so, you'll see throughout this presentation, I hearken back to that 16-city survey. There's also, if you want to do a deeper dive in your council packet, there is a chart that kind of outlines those in more detail for you. So, that first regulation that we're limited in state law is our investigation fee or regulatory tax. And basically, how this works is that the city can choose one of these, can enact one of these options. Cities can have an investigation fee of up to $250 in our case and charge that at the time of application for a premise permit to conduct gambling. 10 cities surveyed charged that investigation fee. The other option is to have a regulatory tax of up to 3% of the proceeds from charitable gambling. The city can require that those be paid back to the city, but the city needs to document and report their expenses for managing charitable gambling to the state. They have to refund any unused funds at the end of the year. So, six cities that I surveyed had that regulatory tax. Bloomington actually had the regulatory tax and found that we weren't really expending enough funds to make it, make sense for us. And so, we went back to an investigation fee in 2019. The next limit to cities' regulations for charitable gambling is what's called the charitable contribution fund. And so, cities can require charitable gambling organizations to contribute up to 10% of their net profits to a fund that the city administrate, administers and regulates. Payments from that fund have to be for charitable contributions as they're defined in state law. And basically, those are the same types of expenses that a charitable gambling organization would spend. So, cities are limited to spend the money the same way a charitable gambling organization would spend that money. There are annual reporting requirements for those funds. We currently do not have a charitable contribution fund. 10 of the cities surveyed had a charitable contribution fund, and the required contributions ranged from 5% to 10%. Next slide, please. Then, cities can also choose to regulate trade areas or where charitable organization, charitable gambling organizations can spend their funds. So, they can require those licensed organizations to spend all or a portion of their expenditures within the city's trade area. And where cities are limited is state statute says that trade area has to be the city and all contiguous cities. So, you can see our trade area is relatively large. Bloomington, Edina, Eden Prairie, Richfield, Savage, Burnsville and Eagan. The river counts or as boundary line and you have to, you have to go across the river. Yes. So, right now, we require 30% of the proceeds to be, of our charitable gambling organizations be spent within that trade area. 13 of the cities that I surveyed had trade area requirements, and those required expenditures really range from 30 all the way up to 100%. The average was about 70%. Next slide. So, then, as I was looking through these city codes through the lens of, well, how do cities ensure that the funds that are raised in the city through charitable gambling go back into the city? One thing I noticed quite often is that there are cities that have what I'll call residency requirements. And this is one of the things that cities can enact under state statute to be more restrictive than state statute. And when I say a residency requirement, what I mean is that eight of the 16 cities that I surveyed had requirements that the organization have a headquarters located in the city or have a certain number of members that live or work within the city or that regular meetings from that organization are held within the city. And there's different standards by which you could measure that. But basically, it meant that that organization had some sort of a local tie. And so, that was, again, about half, or exactly half of the cities that I surveyed had that residency requirement to ensure that it was a local organization that was getting that premise permit to conduct gambling. And we currently do not have that residency requirement. So, that is your, your brief overview. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have or take back any topics for additional research.
Well, thank you for that and thank you for the brevity. Appreciate it. Counsel, questions? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to spend some time, maybe the next 26 minutes or so, just walking through state rulemaking, rulemaking authority and the, the purview of the gambling. No. No. I, I will keep this very brief. The only thing that, that really that I, that sort of raised a flag for me was that the trade area requirement seems a little bit, we, we just seem to be a little bit out of the mainstream on that in terms of ours is, is 30%, which seems low to me. And you mentioned the average was 70% and some of them don't have any, but some, it looks like most are in the 60 to 75%-ish range. And it, it seems to me that if, if, I mean, the concern that prompted this was how are resources going to, you know, organizations that benefit the community directly? You know, there's only so much of that we can control, but that is one area. So, that would be something I would, I would think, if there's support on the council, that might be an area that we might want to explore as far as raising that percentage to 60, 70% or whatever it is. So, that's all I have.
Councilmember Carter? And then Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree. It does seem, when I look at what our policy says, we don't have a residency regulation and we only have the 30% trade area requirement. So, not a lot of, we, doesn't seem then like there's a requirement that most of those resources are coming back into our community. And so, I also would be interested in having a residency regulation. And I do like, I think, Richfield, I think Richfield and Minneapolis have the same language. Organizations must have an office located in the city, must demonstrate substantial services have been sent and substantial charitable funds spent in the city during the past three years. And with that, though, I would be curious, you know, are there any downsides to that? Are there any risks? And, I mean, I can't think of any off the top of my head, but at the same time, I guess I don't want to make any assumptions about that. So, and I do like the, for the trade area requirement, like that 60 to 70% because I think it is good to still allow some flexibility based on where needs are arising. So, those are my thoughts.
Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Capione. You always just bring the right information to the table. So, can, can, help me understand what residency regulations mean? Is it the, is it the, the organization that's accepting the gambling proceeds? Or is it the organizations that would receive those proceeds? So, in other words, if I'm, if I'm Knights of Columbus and I'm not actually using those dollars, I'm actually donating them to Veep or I'm donating them to something else, like which side of that coin is the, is the rule made, made from?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember DeLisandro. So, the right, the residency requirement, and I have to give a caveat, that's my own term that I just kind of came up to define those. That relates to where the organization is from. So, if I am, if I'm an organization from Delano, I would not meet that, potentially not meet a residency requirement, but I could still expend charitable gambling funds at Veep and meet the trade area requirement. So, one is getting at where the organization is located and one is getting at where they spend their money.
Okay. Very helpful. Thank you. So, yeah, I, I agree. I'm, I'm probably getting a little bit more aggressive than even you all would. I, you know, with the trade area being as large as it is, I don't know why we don't just say 100%, frankly, because it's still probably affecting 80% of the funds as they exist today, anyway. My personal opinion on that. So, happy to, happy to get confirmation or, you know, maybe that's not correct. How, how much, how much expense goes into managing this as it is today? And do you have a sense for whether or not it's going to cost us a lot more if we do make some of these lever changes? Or is it really not that big a deal either way for you?
Mayor and Councilmember DeLisandro, there isn't too much additional expense that would be, it would be a different report we would receive from our charitable gambling organization in a different lens that we would use to analyze a permit application coming in. But it wouldn't take a substantial amount of staff time to do either of those. It may impact our charitable gambling organizations if they're required to spend a, a larger percentage of their charitable gambling proceeds within our trade area. So, that would be one thing we'd probably want to do some more research on.
Sure. Thanks. Yeah, I mean, I think Mayor and, and council members think that that's the, that's what we're trying to accomplish. So, it seems to me to, that focus our research in that area would make a lot of sense. Thank you.
Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you. So, basically, three things. So, it sounds like here, when I was looking through, that there's a way to set up a fund so that we have some, some money that we'd be able to, to expenditure ourselves through the fees. Am I understanding that, that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay. And so, that may be a possibility where we talk about trying to, you know, expend artistry outside of and try to do some of that stuff. So, I'd be interested in that. Secondarily, I'd be interested to learn a little bit about how, you know, those current charity funds are being spent in the city, just so I have an understanding kind of of what, you know, what they're doing right now, to see how much of a dramatic change we would be making with these organizations. They may be doing things that we support and realize, you know, what they're doing. So, I'd want, I want to have a better understanding before I make any suggestions. Finally, I'm, I'm really interested in terms of, you know, in terms of what we mean by expenditures and what that means. So, for example, if we had an organization that was a sister city organization and they wanted to expenditure their, their charitable dollars, let's say in Japan, how would that be impacted by this? So, those are just some of the questions I kind of have. So, along those lines, you know, what are the, what are the drawbacks? I think Councilmember Carter kind of, kind of, kind of summed it up. But I'd like to, just in those three areas, have a better understanding. So, when we make this policy change, we understand we're done.
Thank you.
And I would agree. I mean, great minds obviously think alike. I was going to ask the same question about a dedicated fund for creative placemaking across the city. But also, just the thought of the additional information, just the, the scope of this. How many, how many organizations do this currently in the city? What do they, what do they take in each year? Where does that money go? How much of it doesn't stay in, in the Twin City or in, in the city of Bloomington? So, just more details along those lines, just so if we would change these, as Councilmember Lohman said, we would know whose ox is getting gored and we would have a better feel for the changes that we're making.
And Mayor and Council, I do have some very high-level statistics that I can share tonight. We currently have 12 licensed charitable gambling organizations in Bloomington. Five of those 12 have out of, out of town addresses. They're not Bloomington headquarters addresses. And they have 17 premises that those 12 operate. And of those, seven are from the, the out-of-towners, if you will.
And we don't have any idea of revenue that they gain?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I would make sure to come back with that information.
Counsel, any additional questions? Councilmember Coulter?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick one, I suspect. I know the answer to this, but the, the trade area, we, we can't further like subdivide that correctly. We, I mean, as long as, I guess, the question I'm asking is if we say we're to raise the trade area requirement to, say, 100%, we couldn't say, okay, 40% of that has to be within the city of Bloomington and 60% has to be, can be elsewhere within the trade area. Am I correct in that understanding?
Mayor and Councilmember Coulter, yes, you are correct.
That's, that's what I figured. Gambling Control Board is usually more careful than that, so I just wanted to make sure.
They're a picky bunch, typically. Yep. Anything else, Counsel? Thank you, Ms. Capione. Thank you for sticking around and being the last person on the agenda. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our final item tonight is item 5.3, a city council policy and issue update. Mr. Verbrugge?
I'm looking at the mayor because we haven't worked out the details yet of who's going to do the report out. So, the mayor will do the report out from our listening session earlier tonight. That being the case, I have no additional items, Mr. Mayor and Counsel.
Counsel, anything additional? Councilmember DeLisandro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had two items. You're going to talk about the, the meeting tonight.
You're going to talk about the meeting tonight. I thought it was well-run, and I just wanted to throw out kudos to that. But I'm going to make the same plea I've made every single time we've talked about this. I do not think it makes sense to ask people to do a data request to get the audio file for those meetings. And it has come up a ton of times in this whole process, where people are saying it's a degradation of our transparency to not put that audio file up online. And I know it's hard, and I know that it's costly, and I know we were working out the details, so you probably are on it, and it's going to be great and everything. I just wanted to throw the plug out there. The other thing, though, that I wanted to make mention of is, and I don't know if Councilmember Lohman was going to bring this up or not, but we received, through the Minnesota City's Climate Caucus, we received, we had a really good meeting with Representative Hornstein, and they are trying to double the amount of money that is going to be available in the Active Transportation Fund, which really helps focus on things that are not cars in the world of transportation around the state. And they are asking for shows of support from city organizations who might benefit from an increase in that funding. So I do have a template letter, and I would love for us to consider making a statement of support like that in the next week or so. It's kind of a timed-based thing, as you know, the legislature is active. But if that's agreeable to everyone, it literally just basically says, you know, we're supportive of doubling, you know, funding this thing, doubling the number, and, you know, making headway on things like trails and sidewalks and other things like that, so.
If you get a draft letter and perhaps get it into the one-weekly, and we can all take a look at it, and we can...
Yeah. Is that okay with everyone?
Sure.
And Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, just so we're clear, if everyone, if everyone wanted to make a choice to sign on as individuals, we would not be able to do a formal council resolution or support action until May 9th. So depending on the timeliness, and, you know, something that's representative of the body as opposed to the individuals, if you're comfortable with that.
I have no problem. It's just an official endorsement of the idea, I think, is what he's looking for, and by whatever means necessary, I think, is the, you know, from a timing perspective, if you all are agreeable to that. Okay. Anybody doesn't want to support that? No? Okay. Just checking. Thank you. Appreciate it. I'll get that draft to you tomorrow.
Councilmember Lohman?
Thank you. No, and you've got that committed, you can handle that. I'm tired for that. Thanks, man. And just, you know, you don't have to ask me for me out, you can put me down supporting that. So then, just four real quick things here. I do hope that we will, we talked earlier about the water park. It's just a great example of how I think we need to start looking at the sustainability development standards and making sure we get that in place as we kind of move down the line on that. So I hope we'll, as a city, look at that sooner rather than later. I just want to remind my colleagues that when we have things that come before the council, that we just should be careful about whether or not, when we say it's going to pass or not. I think that that kind of fits around, you know, just transparency. And I'm not trying to call anybody out, certainly I have, you know, on occasion been very excited about things that have come before the council and mentioned I really believe it was going to pass or not pass. But just want to remind us all just to be careful with our words and really what we say when we're not in this body. I think our residents kind of expect that of us. I would like to bring back, you know, that topic we had earlier about having a special meeting about labor, and I'd ask us to do it right now, but I just think it, you know, I have had a number of conversations with some different labor parts of our, and I'd like to have some of those discussions, but I do not want to have that in open. I really do respect our city manager, city management team, and I want to be sure that, you know, we can ask those questions and be able to get those. So if that's something we can maybe bring back and talk about, how something like that might be able to be set up down the line, I'd love to do that. And then, and I know I mentioned this to you, city manager, the trucks are missing just different parts of my family now. We had another miss of organics, but this time it was my sister-in-law's house. So they are making their way through the city, and I'm just hoping, I know that for the most part, the folks are getting those organic trucks out there in the city, and it is complicated to be able to get it done. I know that we just had another, I think it's roughly about 500 more folks that are doing this. And so I just saw a few more that showed up in our neighborhood. So again, want to thank the city for all it's done around that, but just want to be sure that, you know, these missed pickups, that we are finding ways of, you know, when we get around to negotiating, and that we can do some more punishment on that. Because I just, these missed pickup are, you know, in the middle of summer with organics, God, that's, wow. Thank you.
Counsel, anything else? I just had a couple of things. To your point, I understand as of last week, we were at 21% participation in the city. So good to hear, and I think that's a good start, and we can get a lot more folks on that. Wanted to say thank you, and thank you to both our volunteers who we honored this past weekend at our Volunteer Appreciation Open House. They, a number showed up, and we had some great conversations with a lot of different volunteers. But then thank you also to staff who made the whole event happen. They did a great job with it, and it was really appreciated, the things that they did. And I also wanted to report out, we said we would, and I wanted to make sure that we did the report out about our first-ever City Council listening session, which we held earlier this evening. And frankly, I thought it went, I thought it went well. It was, it was what we envisioned, I think. It was a conversation. We, folks talked, and we talked back and forth, and a bunch of folks asked questions. And don't know that we solved anything, but it wasn't simply a one-way conversation. But we had a good conversation, and did want to share, we had four speakers, actually. Sally Ness talked, and she asked the specific question, is a conditional use permit a contract? And if someone, when they're applying for a conditional use permit, if they say something intentionally wrong, could that be considered fraud? And she referenced something that had happened, I think, in the early 2010s, and had a specific example from a council interaction. And I think we asked our legal team to look at that a little bit and to see if they could come up with actually more context around it, and then some specifics as to whether or not this type of misleading statement in a conditional use permit application is considered fraud, per se, or not. And there's just, I think there needs to be more context around it and a little better understanding exactly what that was. We heard from Mr. Peter Bowe. You may have seen him with a long white beard and a red suit, standing out by the clock tower, holding a sign saying how many days are left until Christmas. And Mr. Bowe was advocating for a City of Bloomington holiday tree lighting ceremony somewhere within the city to build community, to bring neighbors back together, to build a sense of spirit around the holidays, especially after the last couple of years when that's been lacking in a lot of different ways. We, Mr. Bowe said he had spoken with a lot of different community groups. Councilmember Nelson made the good suggestion of talking to our friends in Burnsville who do something similar, and I know they do that in Eden Prairie as well. And what we asked Mr. Bowe to do was to have those conversations with the different city groups, get some more details, continue to work with the possible civic organizations. And I think I made the commitment that if we could pull this all together, we would find a space somewhere within the city to do this, whether it's here at Civic Plaza, or it's in a park somewhere, or we'd find a way to do this and get this done. I think it's a good idea, and I appreciate Mr. Bowe bringing it forward and putting the legwork into that. We heard from Sharon Billings, who was talking about traffic safety around her house at 84th Street and Thomas, and it, a lot of different conversation. It was nice to have our new chief of police there to offer some perspective. I think it came down to the same conversation that we've been having for a while now, that we need to slow traffic down in our neighborhoods through a variety of different ways. It can't simply be enforcement, but a variety of different ways. And I know that Public Works and the Police Department are working together on a possible presentation, a package, a report to bring back to the City Council in the very near future. So that'll be a conversation that we'll be having before too long. And then, those three folks actually pre-registered, and I thank them very much for pre-registering because we were able to have a better idea of what they were going to be talking about and to try and schedule things a little bit better. Mr. Andrew Thule was there as well, and he spoke about a city-sponsored career fair specifically on the trades, which I know he's talked to Councilmember DeLisandro about in the past. He and I have spoken on the phone about this in the past. I think it's a great idea. I know, you've heard me say, I mean, college isn't for everybody, everybody's not for college, and to find different ways to get people into a meaningful career that they can support their families and live their lives on is an important thing. And I think if we are able to do that, I think we should look for opportunities that we could either do it here at Civic Plaza, perhaps in the parking lot, maybe when there's ice out at the ice garden, something along those lines, where we could have a big group together. I've seen those, that type of thing, and I've seen it work very effectively. So I'd like to be able to try and do that. Mr. Thule also asked about, if we had any updates, about the noose that was found in the firefighter's locker two or three years ago now, and I think it's, as Mr. Verbrugge said, it was officially in the hands of the FBI, and the FBI does not, they do not say when they are investigating something, and they do not say when they're done investigating something. So it's kind of up in the air, and we'll get some information as much as we can and share what we can, because frankly, it's been a long while since I've heard anything about that from anyone. And then he also followed up once again with his question about shopping carts along American Boulevard. So as I said, I thought it was successful for a first time. I think we can continue to try and refine this, how we can make it better, how we can make it more effective, how we can make it more useful. But frankly, I think we're headed in the right direction with it. So anything to add? Anybody else? No?
If I may, Mayor. I just want to take an appreciation for the congeniality and, you know, camaraderie that was shown. It felt like just a much more relaxed environment, which I think is part of what we were trying to go with, you know? People were respectful, people were, felt comfortable, you know? And I think, I think that that's what we were trying to achieve. And, you know, and you didn't mention, but there was at least, what, 10 or other people who didn't speak that were also in the audience. So it was a good turnout as well in terms of trying to make this a community event. It would be hard for people to say that that was not, in fact, a public comment period, considering we had so many members of the public, you know, there, which was really nice to see. So I just wanted to add that.
And thanks to all of you. It was 15 minutes earlier than where we typically go at 5:45, so thank you all for being there, and thanks for the effort that you made to get there. All right. Anything else on tonight's agenda for anybody? If not, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to adjourn this evening's meeting with four minutes to spare. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed motion carries 7-0. We are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Thanks, everybody, for watching tonight.